Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Board Work Session to order now. If everybody would stand for the Budget Allegiance. Thank you. By way of announcement, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of the meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. In terms of attendance, we have everybody here except Mr. Roth, and all the other board members are present. In terms of recognition of guests and scheduled speakers and everything else, I'll turn that over to Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we want to basically present the proposed final adoption, and then on the 24th, as you can see listed on the agenda, there's several presentations. We have a student, as well as check presentations, and a ceremonial signing of first diplomas, as well as M Award presentations, all scheduled for the May 24 meeting. So if we follow to the May 17th, let's talk about the proposed final budget adoption. You should have in front of you a basically a four-page handout. It certainly, it is an update from the special meeting that was held on May 2nd, and as a result of that meeting, there was some additional work done, and there were some recommendations made by the Finance Committee on the 11th of May. And I'm going to step through the presentations. There are some documents on the table in the back for members in the audience. The first page of the document talks about the total expenditures and total revenues and the short, as we discussed at our last meeting on May 2nd, as well as where we were on May 11th as well. If you flip to the next page, the summary talks about actions that were taken on the 2nd, and I'll just refer to a few of those. But the first one on this list was not an action taken by the Board on the 2nd, but was actually an action taken on 3/15. The Board approved the administration to take the cost of the roof, which is in the amount of $67,450, out of the fund balance. As you may recall, we've had discussions in the past through this budgetary process where the administration was, if at all possible, was trying to keep that cost of the roof in the operating budget, if at all possible. We got direction from the Finance Committee to include that as a reduction in the operating budget for the proposed final budget, and to take that money, as the Board had previously approved, out of the fund balance. The next item on that list talks about staff termination and resignations. We will, those items will be on the Board Agenda in the future. We expect that you would take action on those, and those are people that have of themselves or through action of the district determined that they will no longer be employed in the district, and that includes, that is inclusive of two individuals. And it should also be known that those two individuals, those positions, are not going to be replaced. The next item was bond restructuring. The Board took action not to do any bond restructuring. The next item is early retirement incentive. The Board chose to, even though there were less than the intended 15, we chose to take the early retirement incentive, and that's in a total of $281,786. The next item is a school resource officer program change, which would take place in January of 2017. The Board acted to take that, and that's inclusive of $99,000 in expenditure reductions. The next item is reduce the athletic fields escrow amount from $117,000 to $50,000. That was the original action on the agenda for May 2nd. However, the Board voted to amend that motion, and the motion was then to remove the full amount of $117,000, and that is reflected in the column to the right with the other budgetary reductions. The next item is increase student activity fee by $25 per student. The Board chose not to take that action. Advertisements and revenue, the Board chose to allow us to advertise inside our gymnasiums within the Methacton School District, at a revenue of, increase in revenue of $25,000. The next item is a reduction to elementary, our college, and high school budgets. The action was not to take those recommendations, so that would be zero in expenditure reductions. The next two items is the Act One Index and the Peasars Exception, and those are feature actions that the Board needs to consider, and I imagine that will be part of our discussion here this evening. And then there were some, there were three other items that are listed on that sheet. It's the final state revenue projected with a total of $145,617, which is the total additional revenue from the current operating year. So we added that revenue into the overall budget process. The next is review of the overtime. There was some discussion, I believe, at two previous meetings, and after further review, we can reduce the expenditures by $48,192. And then the bus route review, though not finalized, the original number was in the neighborhood of $300,000, but our consultant has confirmed with us that a reduction of two buses would allow us to reduce the budget by $93,232. That puts us in a position, if you will, to flip over to the next page, to give you a recommendation this evening, and it's my recommendation as Superintendent of Schools to approve a balanced budget at $104,820,741, inclusive of the Act One, which includes $1,622,764, and a portion of the Peasars Exception of $653,862. That would, that will mean that the average tax bill with the Act One increase will, for the average homeowner, will be $121.11 increase, and the average tax bill with the Peasars Exception will be $47.72, or a total real estate tax increase of 3.35 percent, or $168.83 per average homeowner. And that ends our presentation here this evening on the budget. Now, Mr. President, if you'd like, you can either ask for comments or questions related to that presentation, or any other matters associated with the budget, or we can hold that off until we get to that section under the recommendation on the agenda.
You know, the, really the most important thing on the agenda that we got going on these days is the budget, right? And, you know, I want to, I want to be respectful of all the board members. We got, we got a group of bright people here with a lot of opinions and ideas, so I think it makes sense for us to start the meeting by having a discussion around this, and making sure we have enough time to hear everybody's thoughts and opinions on it, as opposed to, you know, towards the end of the meeting where we'll all probably start getting a little sleepy to start talking about this important topic. So it's my recommendation, we go through that now. You know, I'm eager, and I hope everybody else is eager to hear everybody's thoughts and questions on it, and really clarify in everybody's mind where they feel we need to be at come next week when we vote on it, okay? So I think to start any discussion around this, why don't we start down at Paul's end and start with you this.
I support this recommendation from Dr. Zerby. Ideally, we would have come back with a lower tax increase. There's history behind this, and there's also the unknown of the future. So from my perspective, one of the hardest parts is the unknown of the future. We are using state money based on current rules, and those current rules are most likely going to change. We have a tremendous amount of decisions to make over the next 12 months around school consolidation, proper scheduling in the high school, lots of educational decisions that we need to make. We have a very lean administration staff, so there is lots of unknowns, and from my perspective, hopefully, I think for next year, my goal is to have a much longer projected view of this. I feel a little clouded beyond '16, '17, which gives me a little heartburn, but in going forward, we need to have a much longer view, and obviously with the three contracts. So from my perspective, I'm going to support this as recommended by Dr. Zerby.
Do you have any specific questions about anything on here? Okay. Thank you. Kim?
I really appreciate all the work of the Finance Committee to get us to this point. I know it has not been easy, and really, there is nothing easy about voting for a tax increase, particularly one that goes beyond the Act One Index. I think it's unfortunate that we were in this situation. I think had we, if we look at this tax increase as really encompassing two years' worth of tax increases, I think it's arguable that we should have at least had a modest tax increase last year, and I think if we look at this as reflective of not just a one-year, but two-year worth of tax increases, it certainly makes it a little bit easier to wrap your head around, but I feel for the taxpayers because it's not, it's not ideal to have an increase like this all in one year. But again, there's nothing that we could have done, given the history that was handed to us, and given the unknowns of the future, as Paul was saying. So I wish that it could be different, but this is what we're dealing with, and I think we've done a lot of hard work to get to this point, and I would support this.
Okay. Thanks. Jim?
A few questions. Back your summary, what is, what are you considering the average home assessment to be? So basically, we're talking $80 per $100,000 on assessment, 82, roughly. You know, I'd rather, it's easier to, for people to calculate their own increase when you're talking in terms of $100,000 increments, when people look at their own assessed value of their home. On the Peasars, I see it's $887,420. If the previous Board had the closed auto bond, what kind of savings would we realize from that closing? Because I remember a number right around $800,000 and some thousand dollars.
I mean, there were, you know, the, there was a determination, at least from the administration, that it was anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million that we would be able to save as a part of building closure, but that certainly wasn't vetted beyond the administration in terms of, didn't go through any of my committees that were originally, you know, put together to help us with that process. So, I mean, I just want to be clear on what that number was.
But if the previous Board had the fortitude and they closed the school, we would have been looking at a $800 to $1 million savings, which is 1.28 percent to probably 1.5 percent in taxes as this go around. What I'm demonstrating here is what we're short, the 3.3, or 3, almost 3.4 million dollars. I would say that number's going to go up again next year. And Stuart, would you say it's unreasonable to say that's going to go up 10 percent or 20 percent, that number?
Which?
The shortfall.
For next year?
Yeah.
It's difficult to say, and obviously, we make every effort to minimize our impacts on a year-to-year basis, but, you know, obviously, any number of unknown variables could come into play, but obviously, we would identify that, address that with the proper committees, and then work towards resolution with any unexpected costs that would come through impacting our budget.
The last meeting that we had about the budget, we're looking at 96 percent of the budget we said was mandatory, 4 percent was not, and we are sitting here debating on whether we're going to take $15,000 a year out of the classrooms for supplies, trying to balance a million, four, million-five budget. You know, if that, if we're getting down to 15,000, I mean, the reality here is you're, we're going to be in this situation year after year after year, and I'd like to know, is there a recommendation from the Finance Committee or the administration on where the contracts have to be, what the value of a school closure is, and how we're going to tackle this? Because this, this is never going away. I mean, unless you actually do something about that quote-unquote 96 percent. Balancing a $105 million budget on the last 4 percent that takes the things away from kids, I mean, we're talking about, you know, here, we didn't talk about furloughs. You know, if we would have closed that school, would we be talking about furloughs now? So, you know, we're doing, it's either furloughs or cut programs, and that's that 4 percent we're working off of which directly affects the kids. I truly don't understand, every year that I've sat here, we're talking about cutting into that last 4 percent or 5 percent. Now it's down to 4 percent. Next year, what's it going to be, down to 3 percent of the budget that we can cut from? You can't cut enough from that, 3 or 4 percent, to stop an increase or minimize an increase on a $105 million budget. So, you know, it's taken $67,000, taking that out of a fund balance, debating that. I mean, we should be building our, leaving our fund balance alone. I mean, what the heck? What's that $67,000 represent in a tax increase? You know, it's almost, you know, it's what, a hundredth of a percent, or a thousand, a thousand, a thousandths of a percent? But I, I'm trying, what I'm trying to grasp here is what's the mindset going forward of this Board? You know, the last Board, yeah, they did as your tax increase. They used fund balance, which I disagreed with because they didn't worry about the 96 percent, except for they didn't have the fortitude to close the school because of public pressure and doing the right thing. And the right thing was for the taxpayers closing the school, so that would at least offset the 1.28 percent of the Peasars, the retirement that we have to show out, the $887,000. So what, where are we going with this? Because I, it's just insanity. It's just going in circles.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate you sharing your thoughts. Move on to Scott.
Yeah. First off, I've got a number of things, but first off, I have to express my disappointment in the administration. I think it was the April meeting, we asked the administration to come back with two budgets. We asked for the budget including Peasars, and we asked for the budget without Peasars. I do not think that the administration ever presented us a budget, and I think that was done with a motion and approved 7-2, something like that, and we never saw it. So I've got to say, Dr. Zerby and Stuart, I'm very disappointed that we never saw your view of that balanced budget.
So if I may, if I may respond to that? We provided information to the Finance Committee associated with what it would mean to deal with a balanced budget with Act One only, and we talked about, and in fact, just give me a second. There's, there was at least eight meetings, some Board, some of them Board meetings, some of them Finance Committee meetings, where at the end of the meeting, before the end of the meeting, I'd asked the Finance Committee, "Do you want me to bring forward anything in terms of furloughs?" I said that the only way to get to Act One alone would be to do that, or would be to take care of the bond restructuring. And we weren't certain where we were going to be with bond restructuring, and the Board made that determination on May 2nd. So while a budget didn't come to you to say what it would look like, we did share with you, in order to get to Act One, it would, it's a rule of thumb that it would take about 14 teachers a furlough for $1 million. And we got no direction after that point in time as whether or not we should be coming back with those recommendations.
I don't think the Board ever said not to, though, Dave, so, I mean, we can argue semantics on that, but at the end of the day, it's not 14 furloughs. We've got a gap of $653,000, and there are opportunities to reduce that gap. Second, we discussed at the Finance Meeting additional revenue coming out of Shenondale for two new buildings coming online, one online in July, and one online in September, so you'd get 9/12 of the tax revenue, and this budget is completely silent to that additional revenue, which is a sizable amount of money if you use the current rates. So I think it's abysmal that we don't have any revenue projections that tie to those two buildings coming online. You know, I'm hopeful that we have some additional information on that. I've heard numbers of upwards of around $300,000 of additional revenue potential based on current tax rates. So if that's true, that takes us down to roughly $353,000. So we're very close to striking a budget that does fit the index without one furlough being mentioned. In addition, we've got potential reserve reductions that we consider. We've got $500,000 in two various reserves, and probably to the surprise of many of the Board members, we found out about a $2.3 million number that really hasn't shown up on any audit reports. It was a, it was a mention in a memo with really not a lot of what can we do with that money, and we're going to use some of that, a million dollars of it, for this year. So there's still 1.3 million, and I believe we're still going to be making contributions to that reserve in the '16, '17 budget. Is that correct, Stuart? We'll be making our medical contributions at the same level as previous?
The medical contributions for '16, '17 are based upon our actuary establishing rates to the consortium. Those rates are adjusted based upon trend as established, so the rates will increase for '16, '17 by a composite of 2.7 percent.
Okay.
As compared to '15, '16.
So we'll pay more into the reserve, which we're funded at 2.3 million over currently, and we're going to take that down to 1.3 million. So we have an option to potentially reduce that a little bit more based on trends and what the going rate of our draws on that have been, and I think it was the administration's recommendation to the Finance Committee to reduce that million. So the question is, could you reduce that a little bit more and balance this budget? So, you know, by my simple math, that takes us to at least the Peasars reduction without one furlough being discussed. And I really find it difficult to believe that the administration couldn't come forward with those ideas to the Finance, to the work sessions, so that we could have a discussion on how we can save the taxpayers that additional increase. You know, my preference would be to have zero. I understand that that's very difficult to do, but I think that we had to give it enough of a try to get our budget within the index, and I think we have not succeeded in that, and we had options to perhaps do that, and without impacting the reserves completely. So, you know, I know at the Finance Committee, we asked you to talk about both. We said we wanted to have a discussion on both, but, you know, my opinion and my vote is for no more than the index, and I think we get there without a lot of trouble, and potentially, we have some other windfalls in the '16, '17 year that we can count on. So that's my view.
Thanks for sharing your thoughts, Scott. Move on to Mike.
Thank you. Stuart, I have one question for you, just because we won't have a chance to have a Finance Meeting before we vote next week. We had talked about the superintendent line number, I think it's 2,300, the line item, and we had talked about the possible deductions to that budget, and we've received a Board clarification on that, that it had been decreased by $75,000. Could you tell me the total number, which would be included for the PDE document for that line item for this, for the proposal for next week?
We were at 101,000 for the preliminary budget. That was approved in January, and that number was reduced down to $25,000 as it relates to the consultant line item of that budget question you just asked.
Okay. And maybe this was, and I hate to get into the details of this aspect of it, but for that line item, 2,300, it's a $6.4 million line item, which various things roll up to. And the reason that I was clarifying this was that we've been, $6.4 million was the budgeted amount for this year. For the preliminary in January, we had gone to 6.49. We had reduced the 6.49 by the $75,000. But my question still remains is, if our projection for the current year is that we'll be by 6.1, what's making up that additional $300,000 difference? Because that area still, I don't think, has been addressed, and I'm curious that, you know, we tracked somewhere for our actual before, we're projecting to be well below budget again, I'm just trying to clarify what the additional $300,000 includes.
When we prepared the projection that you're referring to as a first look, the line item that was reflective of salaries did note at the bottom that we are short one payroll from current, the current year versus the prior year, that was noted at the bottom. So there's an adder back into the salary line item as it pertains to that, that projection number that you just referred to. There's also the component, as we would anticipate certain expenditures within budget categories, there are going to be fluctuations to that, tuition reimbursement being one of those. Our administrative staff, based upon historical trend, was using a certain value of tuition reimbursement. That number has trended down, which is reflected on our '16, '17 budget for a reduction in that line item as well. So as we would look at certain expenditures that we would see trending down, we are reflecting that in our '16, '17 proposed, what would be the proposed final budget for your consideration next week, but we also do have trade-offs that will be impacting next year's budget. Obviously, Peasars at a 16.2 percent increase impacting certain parts of our budget as well, corresponding salary increases for contractual salary increases for our staff, as well as other component areas, as you referred to. There's a lot of different feeders into that, that category outside of just the superintendent's budget, and costs associated with each one of those categories inclusive for our proposed final reflects what we believe to be that $6.4 million number that we are putting into the function 2,300 for the function 2,300 for the proposed final budget.
Okay. I guess for, for just further clarification, so I can see the exact numbers in front of me, is maybe for next week or at least provided to the board before the, the next meeting would be that 2,300 line item of all those aspects that add up to the salaries that benefits all the, the feeders into that. If we could get an idea of, again, the projection for this current year and what we're putting forward for next year, just so we can see the difference in the feeders. Is that we can talk about in generalities, but I still think that there's, you know, we talked about trying to close this a little bit more. I still think there might be a little bit more wiggle room there. And, you know, if I can just see the details leading up to it, I'd appreciate that. I would say that I do support this budget in front of us. Again, as, as everyone before me has said, that you wish that this could be a lower tax increase. But I do think that there's certain items which should be addressed directly. We had talked about the use of fund balance last year. I've said it before and I'll say it again, that it was $858,000 roughly that we used from our general fund balance instead of raising taxes. If the prior board had raised taxes to the amount of level that would be needed to, for a balanced budget, they would have needed to raise taxes by 1.26%, which would have been below the Act One index of 1.9%. If you had done that last year with the new millage rate, according to my calculations, from that new budget millage rate that I'll call to where we are today, the tax increase in front of us for this year would be 2.05%, which would again be below the Act One index. Now, I know we always want to say that we, to get as close to 0% as possible, but if we're looking at how every other school district does this who doesn't pull money from their fund balance, you know, you need to stay under the Act One. That's at a bare minimum what the, what the finance committee has to do. You know, no one wants to seek exceptions. We would be there, have the prior board done what I believe they should have done last year. Regarding the Shenondale buildings, I hope that they come online as soon as possible. Those tax increase and those, the dollars that we can get from that, I think will be a huge benefit to this school district. The problem lies in, we don't know the amount, we don't know when, and we can talk about rumors of about how much it will be, but, and Stuart, you can correct me here, you've done this officially more than I ever have or probably will. Have they ever used anticipated assessed value in the calculation of a PDE document? Or do you use the document that's provided from the county?
The county provides us on a monthly basis, the total value of all assessed properties in the Methacton School District. We use that figure as the feeder to calculate how much real estate tax we would generate. I can't speak for prior administration, but in, in my tenure here at Methacton as well as in other districts that I've worked, we, I would not have used those numbers, assumed the numbers because there are so many variables that can impact that in a way that you could materially impact your budget. So that, that was the reason why, why I would not have used that number, but I certainly can't speak of, of prior administration to know whether or not they, they did or did not.
Thank you. The next thing that I'd like to address was what Mr. Dorn had mentioned about the, you know, possibly cutting, there's $500,000 of reserves out there. 200,000 of that is what we consider our budgetary reserves, which is built into the budget pretty much every year. If you look across school districts, most of them have it. Some of them even have it substantially more. You can find districts that have a $500,000 budgetary reserve. The idea behind this is that there are things that happen during the school year which you cannot anticipate and that these are the things which, you know, need to be built into a budget. You can budget as close as you think to the bottom line, but there's going to be things that are going to change or going to happen during the year, i.e. this year. Because the way that things have turned out, we're going to use our budgetary reserves this year. So if we had cut it last year, we wouldn't have it this year. So I would not say that that is a plausible way moving forward. In terms of the capital reserve for next year, which is $300,000, we had prior to the transfer of $1 million last year, our capital reserve balance was approaching zero. Let that sink in for a minute. Our capital reserve was approaching $0. If you look across districts anywhere, they are significantly higher than where we are even now with the million dollar transfer. You'll find five, seven, 10, 12 million dollars. And we have facility needs ahead of us in the future. And it's been mentioned before that, you know, how are we going to pay for that? Well, we only have one option, is borrowing money. Whereas other school districts who have properly planned by putting money into the budget for capital reserve transfers year over year to build up that balance, you know, we're going to borrow and it's going to have to be funded completely from borrowing. So I would say that cutting that reserve is also, in my opinion, not a viable option. The staffing furloughs, I'm glad that we haven't gotten to that conversation, at least as of now. We do know that the high school scheduling is due, the reports due later this year. Unfortunately, it wasn't done in time for this budget because we don't know exactly how efficient our high school is operating. Mr. Andrews has pointed out, you know, quite often how for our declining in enrollment where, you know, our students have gone down by X amount, our teachers have relatively stayed the same at the high school level. Dr. Zerby provided some additional information with that. I, I haven't had a chance to verify nor does that match up with some of the things I've seen in the past. But to make furlough recommendations or to cut teachers regardless of however many it is, obviously I don't think we need that the 14 that was mentioned for the million dollars, but even seven. We don't know what our correct operating efficiency is for the high school teachers at this point. And I wouldn't want to make a decision before that report came out. And the last thing which I'll mention before I pass it on to Brenda is also along the lines of the capital reserve and where we currently stand. The things that have done, been done in the past are still haunting us and are going to continue to haunt us. The, the field project that we went ahead with and some of this was discussed at the, the finance meeting was sold to the public as a five and a half million dollar project. Okay? The idea was five and a half million dollars for the bonds. We had hoped to use $4 million for that for the fields, offset by 1.7 originally for public contributions to cover the total cost of that. I've said it before that that project should have never been labeled a five and a half million dollar project. Because the only thing that that took into account was the principal amount of what that was going to cost us. If you want to talk about the taxpayers and the impact it's going to have on everyone, you need to think long term. The financing costs are a part of every decision that the district makes. And the last document that was provided to us in March by PFM for the bond restructuring showed that the Demais Bond Series had about 1.7 million dollars roughly in financing costs. So it was a seven, I'm sorry, 1.6 million. So the total was 7.1 million dollars if you're just taking into account principal and interest. So we're already behind the eight ball. We've known, we know that there's change orders that have been out there. We know that there's storm basin issues. There are all of these issues which were not properly planned for, the legal battles, the, the lawyer fees that we have, the project management costs, all of these things. And if we don't properly make decisions in the past or now, it has horrible ramifications moving forward. And I just need to make sure that, you know, that's in everyone's mind that when we talk about, you know, cutting reserves or not moving money over, that these are the things that it affects. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Brenda?
I was, I was on the board last year when we approved using $858,000 of our surplus from the prior year to make this budget work as a whole. In the prior year, we had a surplus of just under 2.4 million dollars. It was the third year in a row that I am aware of that we had a surplus in our budget. And yet every year we had a tax increase. We took the 2.4 million dollars and divided it up in a few ways. We used $800,000 of it towards the surplus for this current year. We transferred a million dollars to the capital reserve fund. We made the first payment in the amount of $200,000 to the capital reserve fund as well and left the rest of it to be left in the surplus, in the fund balance for the district, which was an increase to the fund balance. I don't remember exactly what the amount is, but I, I was content that we were being wise stewards of the money that we put forth there. As has been pointed out, for 33 years before that, there were tax increases through this district. And with the district having a surplus in each of the, the three current years, it made sense to be able to use that money in that way. We also suggested that the district be prudent and continue to make contributions to the capital reserve fund and to make a $117,000 payment to a special account for the field project, which we knew that over a period of 10 years was going to require about a million dollars. So expecting that we had an $858,000 hole that we were starting to fill, if you will, as the year began, one of the things that we did early on in September was to approve two math coaches to be used in the district for purposes of improving our math capabilities among the children. That was an additional expenditure. There were several items that came out of the budget. There was a chief program officer whose salary was included in the budget, which the board did not know about at the time that the budget was approved. There was also a payment of $400,000 that was made in June of 2015 that was included in this 2015-16 budget. So with all of that said, one of the, one of the items that I was not aware of at the time that we approved the transfers out of the surplus was that the million dollars that was going to the capital reserve fund plus the 200,000 would show up as deficit items in the current budget. And so that would increase the projected budget to $2 million. At this point, our budget deficit is around $163,000, provided we use that million dollars from the 2.3 that we have with Bux-Monco Consortium, which is a far cry from what, the way this has been painted as a picture. We, we did make a good decision as far as I'm concerned in determining that we would use a piece of the fund, the, the surplus from the prior year for the budget. So in this year, you've heard of, of a few things that people have commented on that are, if you will, ways of saving a little bit of money for next year's budget that may bring it down a little bit. One of the things that is not included in the projection for next year or projection for this year is the 145,000 that we will get from the state. That is included in the budget though for next year. Is that right? Okay. So with all the opportunities that there are there, with the possibilities that conceivably this number that I have of 163,000 deficit may actually not turn out to be 163,000 deficit. In my way of thinking, it's so important to know what you have trended over the years and where your current year is going to end before you can realistically make a budget for the following year. The last couple of years, we've had late items that have dramatically impacted what the budget has been, such as the sale of buses, which was a huge impact on our budget, which is part of the reason why we wound up with such a surplus in the prior year. When we wound up with such a surplus, budgeting as we did, not knowing that we had this additional revenue coming in, we took taxes from taxpayers that we should not have taken. And I am opposed to doing that. Anytime I can, I can avoid doing that. I think that there are options that we could use. I'd like to know more about the 2.3 million dollars, what our actual liabilities are on that, what our risk is if we take some of that. Why not take the million dollars in this year and maybe a half a million dollars and use half a million for next year's one month's premium, half of one month's premium? That way we wouldn't need to use any of the PESER's exception. I am not in favor of the, using any of the PESER's exception.
Thanks Brenda. Thanks for the history there too. Appreciate the detail. Maybe I'm biased towards this board, but I'm really appreciating how everybody's sharing their thoughts and opinions around the subject. So Andrea, you're next.
Just a board of 10, nine elected people and Dr. Zerby being our 10th. Dr. Zerby is, this is what Dr. Zerby is proposing. We've questioned him and Mr. White Leather over and over to do X, to do Y, to do Z. I am a member of the education committee, the policy committee, the technical center committee, and I look towards the finance committee and Mr. White Leather and Dr. Zerby for things like this. Paul, Scott, Mike, Brenda. But I do sit here torn. What concerns me the most, and obviously this is a budget conversation, I understand that, but the word education has not been brought up once. And I will be frank in saying, education has to be at the forefront. And what I'm hearing from Dr. Zerby is for education to remain the way it is, this is what he recommends. I'm also hearing Paul say, we need to plan for the future, which sounds like we haven't done as much of. I hear Scott saying, there's money somewhere, there's money somewhere. I hear other people saying, the right thing for taxpayers is to close a school and that the old board didn't have the fortitude to close a school. I think what the old board had was an awakening that we weren't ready to make that decision yet and we needed to just do a little more homework before we made that decision. I like the planning for the future. I like Scott saying there's more money. I don't want anybody to have to dig deeper into their pockets, but we forget what we're here for and it's education. And it's not education with an open wallet. I understand that. But if there is money that comes down the pike from more money from Shenondale or other places, we have plenty to spend it on and plenty to save for. We have buildings that need repair. So if there's some kind of way to not affect education and get it down to the Act One, great, but we're down to the wire. And if we do have some extra money, hopefully we can not borrow and not make the taxpayers dig into their pocket next year. That's not really an answer, but as to the best way, because I am torn. But I would like to hear the word, I just, when Mr. Phillips, he brings up a good point. You keep picking, you keep picking, you keep picking. And across this country, we are picking at education. And when I knocked on doors, people said, I don't want my taxes raised. But we also have to remember the future of this country. And it stands in our schools and no, they're not being funded properly. The state government and the federal government is putting it all on us and all on your pockets. But I'm tending to go with what is recommended here.
Thank you, everybody. And before you jump back in, can I share some of my thoughts? Okay, thank you. You know, there's, there are a lot of moving parts here, right? It's, it's a challenge to fully understand and appreciate all the financial numbers and also all the also all the work and detail that goes into it. We also have, you know, in front of us multiple situations that or scenarios in the next 12 months could significantly change us for the better or the worse potentially. You know, the discussion around, you know, contracts and what we do with contracts, you know, that's really something for us to discuss during the contract negotiations. I don't think anybody argues with the point that, you know, salaries and benefits make up the biggest portion of our budget. Everybody agrees with that. And, you know, where we land in the contracts, hopefully, will be a win for everybody when we come out of that over the next 12 to 18 months. You know, relative to the schools, closing a school is certainly not off the table, but we don't know if that's the right decision. And that's what, after we get through this budget cycle and we get this settled down, you know, then that's one of the primary goals we have for the second half of the year is deciding what we need to do. Because if I asked everyone on this side of the table, what should we do, I don't think anybody could confidently, at this point, say, you know what, I know the future of where our school districts heading, so we should keep all the schools open or we should close it. That's what we're in discussions around, the process to review that so that we make sure we make the best long-term decision for our school district and the education of the kids. If I wanted to balance the budget this year, sure, close the school. We'll take maybe $1 million or more out of the budget, but that's not what you're making those decisions on. You're making it on the long-term direction of the school and where you need to be from a facilities perspective. And when I look at, you know, the budget or the report that came out around, you know, our facilities, you know, I think of Scott leading the facilities group, and I'm glad we have him here because of all his experience. But I guess when I think about what the challenge is, that's a heck of a challenge, given what we have in front of us there, right? Whether you agree that that whole number needs to be done or even half of that number, it's a big chunk of investment we're going to have to make over the next five years or 10 years, whether we keep the current school structure or we close the school structure. So we have a lot of challenges in front of us. And, you know, I know there are certain areas that we potentially could save a little bit more money and, you know, try to get down to Act One and save the average homeowner $47 in taxes. But I think we have a lot of work ahead of us. I'm glad we're going to have the same group going forward for the next 12 months because we got a lot of work, a lot of great work, and a lot of challenging decisions to make. So I wanted to thank everybody for their comments. Like I said, I think I'm possibly more biased towards this board because I think we do a better job of sharing our thoughts and opinions than previous boards, but I could be wrong on that. So thanks for everybody sharing your thoughts and opinions on that. Now, Jim, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, a few things. You know, if this board's going to look forward, where's the Finance Committee with our salary and benefits? Are we looking to reduce that number? The salary and benefits of the district is about 74% of our budget. What are we looking at doing with our salary and benefits? How are we handling that? Are we looking for a reduction there? I mean, that's, if we're looking into the future and we have contracts coming up, what's our mindset as a board? Where do we have to be? And what is that number? Has the Finance Committee discussed that on where we need to be in the future with salary and benefits?
Jim, we have not discussed that. That would be an item probably for executive session, but the minutes are readily available for you to read.
So that hasn't been discussed, and we're looking so far into the future on the way we're taxing everybody and how we keep chiseling away at the 4% that takes away from the programs and the classrooms. But we haven't discussed a mindset. I mean, as far as, this should be something that's discussed publicly. This isn't something for executive session far as, hey, you know, we don't want to let people know where we stand in our mindset with salary and benefits. I mean, the public should at least know where we stand. The other thing that's real troubling is everybody seems to be really hanging their hat on Shenondale. You know, here's a large community that age-restricted retirees, and we're looking at them as the goose that laid the golden egg that we're going to get all this additional tax revenue from these seniors. Because Shenondale's not going to pay the tax bill. The residents at the, Shenondale paid the tax bill through the cost of their services, whatever their fees are for living there. So Shenondale's just going to pass that along to the residents. One thing that, you know, really bothers me about any of the school districts in the county, state, is when they go and they appeal someone's assessment to try to get more tax revenue out of an individual business, and I'll use Shenondale as an example because that's been a topic. And to pick them out, to single them out and go after whether it's Shenondale, whether it's ABC Company, mom-pop store, because their assessment might not be up to par. So we might get a windfall. So instead of doing our job, trying to negotiate a good contract or having the mindset of where salary and benefits should be, we're just going to cherry pick off of the backs of seniors at Shenondale to balance our budget. Meanwhile, now it's, I guess, 20 years since the county's done a reassessment. The reality is, the county commissioners should do a county-wide reassessment. That way, the playing field is level with everybody in the community, business-wise, residential-wise, and it readjusts our mil rate. And then that way, when you do a tax increase, you know, this is almost dollar for dollar. For every dollar, you know, just looking at your average here per homeowner, that's almost for every dollar of assessment, it's a dollar increase in taxes. So for $100,000 worth of assessment, you're getting a $100 increase. And that's just for this year. And then next year, we're probably going to add another 3.5%, 4%, which is compounded. It's like a credit card. And we keep going back to the taxpayers with this compounded interest that they're never going to escape. And when's it going to stop? So I don't hear, you know, I hear a lot of blame on the last board. I've been around a long time watching the school district, sitting on the board, and the only thing that changes on the boards are the faces. The problems and not fixing things and not really going after where the problems are, that hasn't changed. The faces, though.
Jim, can I jump in? I think you were on the previous board, right? Correct? Right? And there's a lot of fixed costs that are probably the proper decisions along the way, but you may have voted for those fixed costs. So to act like this is happening outside of your jurisdiction and you are not part of the process is a little bit disingenuous, Jim.
No, actually, I was part of the process, and I criticized all those board members. And before I got on the board, I criticized all those board members for not negotiating good contracts. I didn't vote for the bad contracts. I didn't vote for increase in taxes at all because nobody on this board, it's just like the other meeting. I made a recommendation, a simple thing to think outside the box to work on, the 96% of the budget that we said was mandatory, we couldn't touch. And all I said was, take the $44 million of our total salary and divide that by 180 school days, which came out to about $250,000 per day. Ask the staff to donate four days. Four days of salary. That's $1 million that could have been taken off the budget for them in their kindness, saying, you know what, I'd rather take a four-day pay cut for the course of a year. Hey, you know what, fourth grade is not in session. But anyhow.
I'm sorry, Jim. Would you take four days without pay from your job?
You know what, I've taken reductions from my pay, whether it's from higher insurance bills, higher taxes, loss of business because the economy stinks. There's a lot of things that I've adjusted in my life to because of pay reductions.
But that's different.
But you know what, this is, it's a different way. Because these are teachers, you know.
No, because it's not your employer coming to you and saying that, I want you to work without pay for four days because that's what we need to do to balance the budget. I'm sorry, but I think that's offensive to our teachers.
How many, how many people have you employed?
I don't see the relevance.
Well, you know, maybe you should comprehend.
Can we keep it on topic here? That's moving into personal questions and Kim, you know, asking him about, you know, his job, I think, is approaching the personal side. So let's try to keep it on point and relate to the school budget topic, please.
So I'll get back to the thought here. The four days, at $250,000 a day, them donating that to the school district would have saved the $1 million. The fact that nobody here would even discuss the thought process. Here, we have somebody laugh and leave the room. That's how they handle the situation.
I laughed, and I left the rooms I had to sneeze. Leave the personal out of it. Why don't you join a committee?
You know, it's, fourth grade is out right now. But.
The insults are not appropriate either.
We've got to pull this in, folks. All right. Thanks.
On the budget?
Any more discussion on the budget from anybody? All right. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I just want to mention, then, I'm going to bring forward the recommendation for May 24th as it is presented here this evening. Is that be accurate? Okay. The next, if we go into the agenda, there will be reports on the 24th. There will be opportunity for a public comment. The board minute meetings are going to be provided. And I just want to make note, and for members of the board, that we are, as requested, responding to individuals. If we don't have an answer to a question at a meeting, we are then taking those questions and sending a response to the individuals. And we were asked to include those as an attachment into these, into all of our next meetings. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that that's happening as requested. The next is fiscal items. We have certainly a list of bills, the Treasurers' Report. Those two items were reviewed by the Finance Committee at the May 11th meeting and are subject to any questions that the rest of the board has. Any other members have items on the list of bills or the Treasurers' Report? If not, the next item is interim Director of Business Services. Please know that on May 11th, I went before the Finance Committee and asked them that I would like to move a motion forward for the board's consideration to hire an interim Director of Business Services in the absence of Mr. White Leather on or about June 30th of 2016. And after that discussion with the Finance Committee, it was agreed that we would bring forward an authorization to the superintendent in consultation with the Finance Committee of the Board to contract with an interim Director of Business Services. We do not have a name at this point. We did talk to PASBO, which is the State Organization for Business Administrators, and they gave us a range of what typical interims ask for. And so this constitutes a recommendation that could get us through about 2.5 to 3 months if need be. If at the time that we, and it's approximately $600 a day. So that's typically, sometimes it can be less, but that's what they recommend us budgeting for. So we're in the process, Daniel Penza and I, along with conversations with members from the intermediate unit, as well as some other people within our educational network, trying to determine who might be some qualified candidate to help us in this interim process. So as soon as I have names, I'd like to bring that information forward to the Finance Committee.
It'd be an outside resource.
It would be an outside resource, yes. So it would be someone outside the district, someone typically who has been a business manager in another district and who has retired. That's typically what we would find here. So that is the recommendation. I don't know if anyone has, any members from the board have additional questions on that?
Yes.
I think it would be helpful to be more specific, maybe indicating approximately $600 a day as well as the $24,000.
I'll put the calculation in.
Okay.
Let me just say this.
I mean, it may not be exactly 600. I understand that.
That's correct.
But if we have a range, we'll have an idea, as opposed to somebody who might want $24,000 for one day and, you know, that sort of thing. That's all I'm saying.
I think I can word it so that at least the motion includes an estimate line, but not an exact. Okay, that's fair.
One comment related to that. I apologize, I forget if I emailed the Finance Committee or not, but I gave Dr. Zerby the direction to include all four of you in that process since that's such a critical role. And I can't remember if I emailed you to tell you that, so.
The next item is the healthcare premium payment. I'll turn this over to Mr. White Leather in just a second, but it's important to, for the board to know that as part of any healthcare consortium that the district has or currently is involved in, there is, from time to time, a differential between what the premiums required to pay in offset against what the claims actually occur. And what we're talking about here is taking some of the dollars that have accrued over the past three years in the Bucks-Mongomery County Healthcare Consortium to pay one month worth of healthcare premiums to address where we are planning to land with regards to the 15-16 budget. Mr. White Leather?
Thank you. Just to follow up on Dr. Zerby's comments, this consortium that we participate in started three years ago when we transitioned from a fully insured entity to a self-insured entity, which basically means we pay for our claims as they incurred versus the insurance company establishing a rate for us for which we would pay premium. It better controls your claims to premium paid on an individual member basis or a multi-member basis, as we are one of 22 member entities of the Bucks-Mongomery Health Consortium. Over the three years, each year, our actuary, who is a, basically is hired from the consortium under membership vote, establishes rates for us each year. So Methacton, as well as the other 21 member entities, are given rates by which they contribute premium based upon single, two-party, and family rate structures. Based upon the performance of Methacton School District on its own over the past three years, the district has generated a surplus. Now, to put this in perspective, $2.3 million basically represents two months' premium. The district spends about $1 million a month on premium. Now, I know most folks here, sitting at table, don't have a lot of experience, and maybe I'm speaking out of line, but with these health consortiums, if you do, it is absolutely prudent and critical to have a reserve. The purpose of the reserve is to buffer the school district against unanticipated claims that can and do occur. I can speak specifically of several districts that participate in the consortium that have actually utilized their surplus and actually gone into deficit. What happens when you go into deficit is that the school district is required to kick in funds immediately to replenish that account. So if, under the example, were that we were at a zero reserve in our account and we had So if under the example were that we were at a zero reserve in our account and we had a series of unanticipated claims that would negatively impact us, the consortium would say, Methacton School District, you need to pay us X number of dollars to bring your account back whole. And then work towards bringing that surplus in line with what we anticipate being a buffer for you. With that background in mind, looking at what we had discussed with finance committee last week and what ultimately is on your table for recommendation for discussion tonight and vote next week, is basically to take this account down to one month's reserve. So under the situation where we would have continuing bad claims or a spell of bad claims, which things do go in cycles for us, and it has been readily apparent throughout the member entities, that some districts have a good span of time followed by a bad span of time, and that surplus account buffers them against that, that particular experience without having them kick in dollars that they would not have budgeted within their particular accounts. So by us recommending us using 1 million or approximately half of this account, it's still allowing us to have a small yet manageable buffer of reserve into our health consortium. And again, we're paying a million dollars a month now. That amount is gonna go up for next year with our claims experience and our appropriate rate increase for next year. So to the extent that we are prudently using half of that reserve, there is also the component of what are we doing as a consortium to help us more stabilize our claims exposure both up and down? And while we recognize that you cannot control high claimants, they occur when they, when they occur, our proactive approach as a consortium is to minimize that exposure by reducing what we consider to be a catastrophic loss. So if, if I were to have a significant health illness that would result in hundreds of thousands of dollars of claims, we right now pool at $200,000 for Methacton School District under a catastrophic claim. So we could be exposed from $0 to $200,000 under one claim. And if you had multiple claims, you can see how quickly that can add up. And for July 1, 2016 going forward, we're reducing that pooling amount to $50,000. So we're dramatically reducing our exposure to a catastrophic claim. And that million-dollar buffer that would remain in our account would be that for which we would use for payment of these claims as they would come in. Hopefully it would be minimized with other things that we're doing to more effectively manage high claimant care costs across the consortium. But to the extent that we would remain and would recommend having funds left in that reserve account, again, it is very prudent for us to have some level of reserve in there based upon the dollars we're speaking about for that. I know I provided a lot of information. I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions, but I at least wanted to give you a more comprehensive view of how this system works because it is complex. But we'll be happy to answer any questions if you, you have them this evening.
Just a couple of questions. Stuart, do they provide you on a yearly basis a balance? You know, now we know we have $2.3 million, but you know, this has been going on for three years. So at the end of the first year with the consortium, do they provide you with a, you know, what your, what your account balance is with them? How much you have?
Yes, they provide that information to us on a monthly basis.
On a monthly basis? Okay. So I would just ask in the future, because you know, this did kinda come out earlier a couple of months ago, that, you know, this amount of money is out there, that I think that this should be one of those things that if that money is out there, and we know it's out there, that that gets communicated to not just the finance committee, but to the entire board as a whole? And along with that is, I guess, the, the accounting aspect of this. Because it sounds like it's, it's our money, but it's off our books. So what is the, what's the reconciliation there in terms of our audit report versus the consortiums?
These monies are paid into the trust, the Bucks Montgomery Health Trust. So the dollars that are ultimately reconciled at the end, end of the fiscal year are not a reportable item for, on our financials. So to the extent that we do have an account with the health trust for which we pay dollars in and have a reserve, there is an audit conducted of the trust, and each member entity has a reflected dollar amount of either positive or negative surplus to their particular account. But from a local audit perspective on ours, these finances, these financials would not be reportable on that.
Okay. And last question was, you mentioned the reduction of the buffer that we use from 200 to 50. That was a consortium decision. What was the, the financial ramifications of that? It would seem like, you know, 200 may be a shade high, but by reducing that to 50, is the, the premium payments that we're making that much higher because we're reducing our, our liability by that? I know that's not a Methacton decision, but could you discuss if that was talked about in terms of, you know, the member districts of the consortium?
Yes. Actually, there was a lot of discussion on that because, one, you have to pay more for what is called your stop loss beyond the $50,000 to cover that buffer because your potential exposure to a claim in excess of $50,000 is much greater than your claim exposure to a claim over $200,000. So when the rates were developed by our plan consultant for July 1, 2016, they incorporated what is the, the anticipated cost as a consortium to absorb those claims in excess of $50,000. While we are independently evaluated in terms of claims experience and our rates projection for the, for the next year, our pooling of our catastrophic claims is consortium-wide. So each member entity, as part of your premium, there is a component of that premium that goes towards stop loss. That premium has increased as a result of us migrating over to this reduced planned catastrophic plan limit from 200 for us to 50. Now, there were other member entities that were much higher that went down to 50,000, and there were others that were lower to drop down to 50. But ultimately, that, the, the dollars associated with that did filter in. The offsetting component for us, luckily in, in this situation, is our migration from Independence Blue Cross to Aetna and CVS resulted in a significant reduction in what our anticipated rate structure was for next year. We had a significant decrease in our RX, our prescription premiums, and we had a relatively small, smaller increase compared to the market conditions for our, for our medical, which resulted for us in a 2.7% increase for next year. I'm sure that most people sitting at the table realize that a 2.7% increase in your rates for health insurance is incredible, based on what you see typically out in the industry. So there was a couple feeders into the component for us that helped us maximize the value of our rates for next year, inclusive of the reduction in our, our catastrophic claim amount.
So if we have a $2.3 million balance at this point, and you're recommending $1 million to be used in the current year, how did you arrive at determining that $1 million was a, a safe amount and yet not too much for us to be taking from that?
Primarily based upon the fact that the consortium is aggressively reviewing and trying to stop those districts that had the wild swings between having a surplus and going into deficit. And there were a couple of districts that had that happen to them over the course of the three years since our involvement with the consortium. However, by their now dropping the catastrophic claim limit to the 50,000, it's a more prudent way for us to manage that potential swing for us. So while we would have reserve in our account, which would equate to basically one month's of premium, by reducing our potential exposure to those unknown high claimants, we feel confident that that amount of money, that remaining million dollars, will be sufficient for us to address the potential swings that may occur within that new $50,000 limit that would be below our pooling for our stop-loss claims.
So if it's 50,000, you basically are covering 20 claims, if you will. Well, he said a million dollars. Yeah, he said he was leaving a million dollars. Right. I know there's 300,000 other, but, yeah, so that would make 26 claims if you left a million three.
Yes, you are correct. I mean, obviously, the, the rates did go up for us for next year. So while we're paying a million, using rough numbers, while we're paying a million dollars this year, we pay 1.1 million dollars per month next month. And I'm, I'm using rough numbers, but just so to give you a perspective of the, the increase that we, we've incurred as a result of the 2.7%.
So the reason for leaving that amount in, there is some logic to that. There's some reason why that number of potential claims makes sense for us based on the size of our population and our previous experience or other districts' previous experience?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, the reduction of our, our exposure is certainly benefiting us to a large extent. However, the, the remaining dollars that would be left in our, on our account certainly is a, a much more prudent way for us to buffer against a situation as you referenced where you would have a number of high claimants. If we would not have reserve, the consortium would come to Methacton School District, knock on the front door for Rena and say, you need to write us a check for whatever that amount is. And obviously, that would be an unbudgeted item and which would incur additional expense for us versus having funds left here for that potential situation to occur.
So you couldn't just leave a small amount in there, say, half a million dollars, which would typically represent 10 claims, and replenish it if became the need and keep that stop-loss provision in effect, yet be able to release some of the money?
You typically see, as general guidance within trusts, anywhere from two to four months of reserve is typically what you see under a situation where the, the stop loss is higher than what we're bringing ours down to. When you have situations like that, we, we are, we're taking some approaches to controlling our exposure moving forward that is gonna allow us to reduce our surplus to the 1.3 million dollars versus keeping it at a higher amount under a typical consortium structure where you would have a higher stop-loss claim exposure to the individual member entities. So for us, under a normal, if we still had the $200,000 stop-loss limit for 16, 17, probably would be bringing to you potentially a different recommendation. But by us reducing that amount by, from 200 to 50, we believe administratively, we believe it's a prudent approach for us to reduce that dollar amount by one-half to address expenditure and projections for this year.
Okay, just one more. On the basis of that, the stop loss has gone down to 25% of the previous amount that you had. You had 200,000, it's now 50,000. Is that right? So therefore, if 2.3 million was prudent to have with a $200,000 stop loss, wouldn't something like 500,000 or 600,000 be the appropriate amount to keep in there?
There's an inherent challenge when you're looking at medical premiums and your potential exposure on the other side of the equation. If we were to get into a situation where we had a number of high claimants, I, as I say, I, I would love to have the crystal ball to tell you that for 16, 17, the district will only have two claims that would exceed the, or, you know, be within that $50,000 buffer. But it, it really ebbs and flows. I've seen small districts have 10 claims that were in excess of their stop loss. And I've seen hu, like Central Bucks School District, which is one of the member entities, very large school district, they've had three large claimants. So it's really, it's, it's a, it's really a guess when you really come down to it because any employee on any given time could have a significant health issue, which could result in significant cost outlay for not only the school district, but actually all the member entities, because now everybody's contributing to the stop loss. So it's really a difficult gauge for, for me to say, if you reduce that, then you could reduce yours, your reserve account by an equivalent percentage. That's really a difficult one for me to disbalance because I've seen the, the flip side of it, where I've seen districts have to cough up money that they didn't have to get their accounts back into the, into the surplus.
Bottom line is, this is our, our, our best conservative approach to addressing two matters. One, making sure that we, we take a, a reasonable approach to maintaining reserves for our health code program, at the same time, looking at addressing the matter before us and ending this fiscal year. You know, we certainly can have further discussion about the remaining funds at another time. This board could make other determinations to those funds, but what we have in front of you this evening, not for a vote, obviously, not until next week, but is really the, the matter of, should we use 1 million of the existing surplus to offset those costs? And that's what I need you to consider while, while you may be thinking that there may be other uses of the, the other money. We could certainly revisit that at the board's determination.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Thank you, Dr. Zerby, and Mr. White Leather. I'm much more enlightened than I was.
I do. Yeah, I'll try to make it brief. Obviously, we've made a good deal with the consortium and they've sourced healthcare very well, which is, you know, the benefit of those consortiums. So, so, you know, I think anytime we can play in a bigger pool to get better buying power, that's what we ought to be considering. My concern, and it probably lies a little bit with what Mr. Ryan said, is, you know, the amount of surplus that was built up, you know, I'm glad we have the ability to take it. But if we have the ability to draw on that 2.3 million, then it does need to show up somewhere, why maybe not within our direct financials. It ought to be footnoted somewhere, just like every other reserve the district has the ability to tack, tap into. You know, it might not be a financial report required, but it's funds that this district has that need to be recognized. And, and I, I think that's a default. I don't know if our auditors knew about it, but I would love to hear an audit opinion of not reporting that, at least as a footnote in our financial reports. Because I have a feeling they'd say we ought to report that.
I, I think along the lines of that, I think as we were going down this road with, with the recommendation, we recognized that, that concern. And certainly, I agree, as well as the rest of our administration agrees, that, you know, we should make that information available, if not monthly, at least on some regular basis for the board's review. So we concur with the statements.
Yeah, and if we, if we get a monthly statement, then having a quarterly update, that's one line of finance committee, I think, makes a ton of sense. Hey, we have added X amount, we have, you know, zero catastrophic claims, so our reserve is built by X. Because then we can decide how we wanna manage that reserve most effectively. That's it.
On that, on that note, one of the things Dr. Zerby and I have been talking about is, you know, with Stuart moving on to a new position, we're gonna be, be bringing in a new person. And we, we have this finance committee that now has some time working together and everything. We're gonna be, Dr. Zerby and the new finance director are gonna be looking at ways to provide more information that's more tailored towards our finance committee. So sharing thoughts like that is greatly appreciated. And, you know, over the next six to 12 months, we'll be seeing a lot of, I expect to see a lot of different changes in how we're reporting financial information so that our finance committee can really zero in on the areas that are important to them, plus the, what's really important to, to the new business director.
If there are no other comments?
And the taxpayers.
Health care consortium? Healthcare premium? Is there any other? No? Okay. Okay.
Just real quick, to follow up on Scott's point, I think also to be able to see potential risk, not only just potential reserves. We need to know if there's something lurking on the other side of the reserve. The balances are going the wrong way, so absolutely, that needs to change from a visibility perspective. Stuart, can you comment anything about, obviously, the negotiation seems to have gone very well. And to Mike's point about the two-hundred thousand to fifty thousand seems almost sometimes a two-point-seven increase for that additional safety net seems a little, almost like a teaser rate for me. Is there any perspective of what we anticipate the consortium increases to be over the next few years? I realize there's lots of other variables, but is this additional reduction in our catastrophic loss cap going to bite us in the butt down the road?
The consortium's performance for us over the last three years has been extraordinarily beneficial. I can tell you, the first year we went, we had a rate increase as a fully insured, somewhere just shy of twenty percent for the first-year increase, they fully insured. By us going to the consortium, we were able to mitigate all but a tiny bit of that increase. The second year, we actually had a rate decrease overall. And this past year, we also had a minimal increase as well. I can tell you, over the long term, there is, the consortium is very actively engaged in mitigating any increases long-term. And that was a big function of us going out and putting an RFP out for services, the administrator of our account. Being that we're self-funded, we pay for the claims as they incurred. Our participation with Aetna and CVS is a mechanism of they process the claims. They have negotiated discounts with the providers. So, if you go see Dr. Zerby's medical practice, Aetna has a deeper discount with Dr. Zerby's medical practice than IBX. So, those are some of the functions that we participate in.
I'm not that kind of a doctor.
I was using an illustrative example. So, to the extent that we really are looking at ways to minimize our cost increases and looking at that over the long term, while they have not provided us with necessarily, this is what we anticipate our rates to be for two or three years out, I know that that is a big part of our processes, to really focus in on, drill down on ways to minimize that, whether it's more actively engaging people to use lower-cost providers or healthier lifestyles to mitigate against higher claims, things of that sort. Are all of those parts that we're actively engaged to mitigate potential large increases for us over the long term.
So, the next item on the agenda is the North Monco Technical Career Center budget. Again, this was reviewed at the Finance Committee. Are there any questions on the AVTS budget? As presented? If not, then we'll go on. The next item is the final budget adoption. That'll be the motion for May 24th. On personnel items, Mr. Harney, you want to review those quickly with us?
Sure, we have seven resignation professionals this month. We have two resignation classifieds. We have five employment classifieds. We have one employment-long-term substitute classified. One change-of-status professional. We have one change-of-status classified. Two uncompensated leaves professional. We have two uncompensated leave classifieds. We have seven supplemental contracts for your approval next week, and the list of volunteers as attached.
Any questions on any of those items from Mr. Harney? Yes?
Just one quick question. The additional custodial hires, so five of them.
Yeah, they were added today, I believe, that we dispatched.
Will that have an impact on the overtime and the need for, you know, the current staff to fill in for the open vacancies? So, obviously, you played the big, right, time and a half, so you got to reduce something, I would think.
Actually, those have been filled by our in-house substitutes, our casual-on-calls, as we call them. So, the, I don't see those hires necessarily impacting that overtime situation, because those people were covered full-time by our in-house substitutes. Those positions that were vacant.
Any other questions on personnel items?
I had one other question under supplemental contracts. We had somebody by the name of Tracy Murray, and the position was mentor at Methacton High School. I understand most of these positions in here, but could you explain to me what the mentorate, who is that mentoring?
They mentor new teachers or long-term subs that are in a position. And this is an extension, because long-term sub has now been there for the full year. So, we weren't anticipating that. Sometimes our leave of absences start as a half a year, and then they'll go to a full year. This did that, and we needed to adjust her contracts to show that that was a full-year mentorship. So, full-year mentorship is twice that.
So, mentoring new hires, or any new hire new teachers, or new hire teachers from other districts, or both?
We do new hires, all new hires. We do all long-term subs for their first year, if they're here for six months or the first one semester or more. We also occasionally will do mentors for people that have drastic changes. Somebody may be going from regular education to special education or vice versa in a position they have never really taught before. We may provide a mentor in extreme changes in assignment.
Okay, and this mentor is a full-time position at the school?
No, it's a full-time employee now, a professional, that just is going to help that person in their year of the transition, of learning the curriculum, all those supports that you would attach to somebody in a mentorship. So, that four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, if you times that times two, that's what another teacher would get to mentor someone else, another professional.
Got it, okay. And we pay for that mentor because it's in our teacher's contract that we'll do that?
No, actually, we've always provided mentors, and that's really kind of a best practice in education.
I'm cool with mentors, and I had many mentors that I had, plus mentored other people in the corporate world, but nobody got paid extra for it.
Well, that figure is part of, yes, the contract.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand.
That figure is, the concept of the mentor is really considered best practice.
I think mentors are a great thing. I just was surprised that people didn't do that to help advance. I didn't realize it was a paid assignment. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go on to the next items. That will be curriculum and programs. Dr. Gattona.
The first item that we'll be asking for your approval is an annual item that appears here for our participation in the noted federal programs for the 2016-17 school year. We will also be seeking approval for the granting of diplomas to members of the class of 2016. And you have all seen the ESL program plan that has been developed, and we will be asking for your approval on that program plan.
Are there any questions on any of the items listed here? If not, we'll move on to policy. Please know that we have several policies for second reading, and this evening, we also moved several policies forward to first reading, and they'll be on the agenda within the next day or so. Any questions on matters of policy?
As far as policy, have we started looking into how the mandate that President Obama passed down for bathrooms, how that affects our policy? And is there a policy that addresses that? And what's our position on that as a board?
Right now, we don't have a position on it. That was recently mandated, or from the federal government. And you know, the Pennsylvania School Board Association's looking into it, and the state of Pennsylvania's looking into it. So, our position right now is to see what comes out of their discussions and look into what makes sense for us as a school district once we get past this budget cycle.
Now, people in our community, in the Methacton community, playing, you know, at baseball fields and stuff like that at the games, the parents I'm talking to, residents of the township are livid about this. So, is it a matter of we're going to do something based on what our community wants, or something that's going to come all the way up from the top? Now, you know, I look at it as, our community is what counts. I don't think, you know, we have, what, five thousand students in this district? How many do we have an issue that we have to have a third bathroom or some other type of facility? So, this is my question, and maybe Dave can let us know. Do we have anybody in the district, you know, without mentioning names? Is there any, is there one, is there ten?
We aren't in a position to discuss this now. I just gave you what our plan was that we literally have put in place for right now. We're focusing on closing the budget. There's a lot of discussion and legal ramifications that are being talked about by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, as well as the state of Pennsylvania. So, you know, we're in a mode of waiting to see how that, all that rolls out and to see where we land.
And also, it was in the Friday memo.
Yeah. Will we be putting this on the agenda to discuss it? So, the position is, we're just going to let the state or the federal government or PSBA dictate what we do in our community?
You never heard the word dictate out of my mouth.
Well, I'm looking at it as, if we're letting everybody from above tell us what we need in our community...
We are not, Jim, we are not letting anybody from above tell us what we are doing in our community. What I'm saying is, at a higher level, there are a lot of legal battles going on, legal discussions, that could have impact on what happens to all the school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. So, there's, our decision is to focus on what we need to get done with the budget, let those people work on those things that have ramifications broader than our school district.
So, when people come to the podium there and want to discuss it and find out where we are as a board and in our community, we're just going to tell them that we're going to wait until it comes down to us? Let somebody else make the decision?
You keep on reiterating that we're going to let somebody else make a decision, and I keep on reiterating, that's not what we're doing. So, I'm not sure why you keep on saying that.
Well, when are we going to have a discussion where we stand in this?
When we feel it's appropriate.
Well, I think, you know, when is it appropriate? Maybe that's the question. When do you feel that it's appropriate to talk about the subject?
If you'd like me to include it in the agenda for the next policy meeting, I'd be happy to do so.
Well, I think it's more, it should be in the board agenda, the board as a whole, because it is a very important topic.
You've made your point, Jim.
So, we'll put it on our record.
We didn't say we were going to go with your point. We said we heard your point.
Okay, so, the community, as far as when I go back to the community and people, we're not taking a position as of now, we're not going to discuss it as of now.
Jim, I think your talks to individuals does not represent the entire community, and your assumption that it does is not fair. So, to the point of Chris, we need to move on in the conversation and discuss it at some other point. I don't, I will gladly answer if somebody wants to ask me directly, but that's only my opinion, it's only mine. It's not a board decision at this point. That's the point.
And that's the whole point of having nine board members sit here at a table, so we can all discuss our opinions and come to the conclusion of where the majority of the board stands.
Jim, it's not an agenda item, it's not really up for discussion around this.
I'd like to be on the next agenda, our next board member, or next board meeting agenda.
We understand your point and your position. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, under other, there's an appointment of board secretary, board treasurer, school physician, football team physician, and dentist. Are there any questions about the appointment of any of those positions? If not, we'll go on to gifts and donations. As you can see, listed, there are six donations. I do want to make a correction. Ms. Gattona, which item did we need to make a correction on? And we'll do this fourth.
The nine thousand dollars from the Ed Foundation for the Methacton Community to help fund STEM maker spaces, that the grant was actually written for Audubon and Skyview for this year. The maker spaces would not go very far across our entire elementary schools for nine thousand dollars, so that it would actually be two of our schools for this year.
So, we'll make those corrections, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that information to be accurate, as she stated. And that's item number three under gifts and donations. Any other questions on those? If not, we have item G, trips, to approve the Methacton High School baseball team's spring training to Orlando. It's a trip that they take annually. Then lastly, under this, or not lastly, the second-to-last strategic plan. Last month, we presented the strategic plan. We received some feedback, not a substantial amount. And based on the feedback that we received, there were more comments than actual, you know, recommendations, and therefore, there are no additional changes from the presentation that was presented in April. So, we will be bringing the strategic plan as it was presented in April for your consideration and approval on the 24th of May. Any questions on the strategic plan or any of the trips? If not, school enrollment vendor. As you can see, the items are blank here for the second enrollment projection. As we begin talking about that, I want to know that the last public meeting that we held, the board asked me to go back and get some additional information. I'll just, for the record, I'll let the public know that I went back. I talked to Montgomery County Planning Commission. It is accurate that they had one full-time person and now have a second full-time person for doing projections at Montgomery County Planning Commission. So, I believe somewhere along the line, one of the board members said that or said something related to that. And the concern simply was, the way I understand it, is that, you know, how deep are they within the organization? And how, if something happened to one or two of those individuals, how could we depend on that? I guess there was that type of concern. And then the other matter was, you know, could we go back and ask Mylone and McBroom to sharpen their pencil? And could we ask them to, you know, because they could stay within our timeframe, could they come back and give us a better dollar amount associated with what their services are? So, I did provide that information to the board. I did get an official proposal from Mylone and McBroom. I believe they did go down about four thousand dollars in their original proposal for enrollment projections. And while we were speaking at the last public meeting, we also talked about, you know, having possibly one vendor deal with not only enrollment projections, but the opportunity or possibility of them, of one vendor doing the redistricting process as well. So, as you recall, the options that I last brought before you was to have Montgomery County Planning Commission do the enrollment projections. They would not be able to start until September of 2016. And therefore, that would put us, if we stayed sequentially with my timeline, that would put us in a decision-making position somewhere in the neighborhood of June or July of 2017. My recommendation was to go with Montgomery County Planning Commission for an approximate cost now of about twelve thousand dollars, which would include about eight thousand dollars for the initial enrollment projection with about seventeen hundred each of the next two years for follow-up enrollment projections. And that we would then put an RFP out and go find a vendor to do the redistricting, so that we would have two vendors running basically in parallel, one independent of the other, where Montgomery County Planning Commission doesn't do the redistricting work. They do enrollment projections for many districts. So, that was my recommendation then, and it still remains my recommendation for a number of reasons. First of all, for cost. First of all, for cost. Secondly, I know the, the work that they've been doing with other Montgomery County schools and the, the superintendents from those districts have said that their work was thorough and complete and, and consistent with what they expected. And lastly, it should be known that the committee that reviewed the, both, or all the proposals equally said that either Mylone and McBroom or Montgomery County Planning Commission could do the enrollment projections equally well. So any questions on that matter or anything associated with enrollment projections?
So on next Tuesday, that'll be filled in?
Well, I'm, I'm seeking direction from the board because right now, I, my recommendation is similar to the last recommendation and therefore may not be consistent with what the board would like to see. I mean, I could certainly bring my recommendation forward, and I can fill those blanks in, and we can vote then and, you know, give me some other direction. But my concern is that I don't want to end on May 24th in the same position we were at the last time, because what I don't want to do is put this off any longer. I mean, we, we're going to be behind a little bit, but, you know, one month is, is one thing, two months is, is starting to, you know, make me nervous.
So to try to maybe solve this along the way, I think there's a third concurrent activity that we could add among ourselves to the board for, as, as a follow-up to what Jim has said in a different ways of where we stand on the particulars of the potential of a closure of a school or the potential of a redistricting. So I would propose that we have a series of executive sessions where we decide on the criteria for what we consider to be, how we're going to evaluate when we get these things back and not be sort of flat-footed when these reports come back related to that. So that is going to take some time probably to, and we can do those three things together. If we can do those three things together, then I would suggest that Dr. Zerby propose his original proposal, which is to go with the, the local Montgomery County.
I will reiterate, just for the students, staff, community, that no one wants to rush this, but that we do need to be cautious of your timeline and also realize there will be detours. But educationally wise and fiscally wise, I do think we need to make some decisions and move on like you suggested.
So just a couple of comments, and it sounds like they're equally qualified. I think the difference is Dr. Zerby, and maybe you've clarified this, but, but I don't remember. If we use Montgomery County, even with the additional hire, they can't start until September. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
And they'll finish the report somewhere around the end of the year?
That's accurate.
Okay, so are we going to be back into the same category that whatever results we get, if there's an action to be taken, that there's probably not enough time to action it in the 17, 18 school year?
Well, I, I think that if alone, if Montgomery County Planning Commission is the only vendor doing the work, we, we are not going to be in a position to make any decisions. So, so for example, that would mean that we would run my initial timeline sequentially, which would mean that the idea was, let's get an enrollment projection report that the board can believe in and that the public can believe in. Because, because that's, that's the basis of, you know, not a decision that's going to, you know, be just a two or three-year decision. This is a long-term decision that we need to, we need to address. So faith in the numbers is, is critical. If, so if we stay sequentially, that would get us to December. It would probably take about three, four months to do a redistricting, and it would put us in a, in a position to not give our families and our staff the appropriate time to transition if, in fact, the board thought that the, the information that came back was appropriate to suggest the closing of a building. So going back to my original timeline, I was hoping that by the middle of January of any given year, a decision could be made to allow for what I feel to be the appropriate amount of time for people to, to make the transition. So with that said, if, if we go ahead and, and agree as a board on the 24th to take the Montgomery County Planning Commission, I would also then follow up with a second motion to suggest that the administration be authorized to prepare an RFP to go out and seek redistricting services. And the reason we would do that is because there was dialogue at the last meeting to say, well, regardless of if we have data that suggests that our enrollment is or is not going down or up or whatever it is, there, there, there appears to be an imbalance among some of our elementary schools. And, and because of that imbalance, it may be prudent for us to consider what a redistricting plan would look like so that regardless of a closure, we could determine if it made sense for our community to do just that, to redistrict, to better position our, our students and services within, within those buildings in a, in a manner that's more effective. So, so my suggestion is if we go with Montgomery County Planning Commission, we also have a next step to do, deal with, and so that we run these two things parallel. We have a vendor going down the, the road with the redistricting information and providing some options and, and some things for us to consider, and the planning commission comes in with a report in December. So they meet in December, two different vendors, which would likely give us the information that we need.
But wouldn't the results of Montgomery County's planning commission be the driver? I understand that there's probably a need to redistrict now with some of the elementary schools, but wouldn't the results coming from Montgomery County drive the redistricting plan to a different level if there's a school potentially in the mix versus a straight redistricting? So, so are we, are we, are we paying for redistricting and then have to redistrict after we get the final results and we see what in fact the, the planning commission says or whomever the vendor that we, that we decide? It sounds like we would, we would, we'd be jumping to conclusions if we would redistrict early, unless we were saying, we're not going to close, we're going to redistrict, and then potentially then have to redistrict again, which, which seems, yeah, but I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about running two scenarios because that's, to me, that's a waste of money.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we take any action on any of the matters until we have all the information. So just because we get some scenarios associated with redistricting, it does give us some opportunity to think about, A, here's what a redistricting plan would look like with school X not in the picture any longer, and here's what it would look like with school Y not in the picture any longer, and here's what it would look like with all the, the buildings in the picture. And those would just be, be some information that, you know, we could consider if, in fact, in December, it shows that our long-term, no matter what it shows from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, what our enrollment will be. I mean, if, if it shows that, you know, it's going to continue to decline over the next 10 years, well then, that may lead us to a, a decision different than to say it's going to be stable for the next 10 years or it's going to increase. I, I can't, I can't, I can't predetermine what it is that those two vendors might come with.
Planting multiple scenarios, that we are kind of pre-planning it, and that concerns me based on the community feedback the last time. I, I guess the only thing I'd say is for, what is it, about 20K different between the two, if we consider time of the essence to make sure we have plenty of time to have dialogue with the community, that, you know, maybe starting earlier makes sense if we can get that information, that's the real information, and not do multiple scenario planning, but do a specific plan against a set of results that the board receives. So, I mean, that's my only, my only concern is if we can buy three months and for 20,000, we can have a dialogue where our community understands what's happening, we have plenty of discussion time, plenty of notice period time, et cetera, that the 20,000 just seems like a small additional fee. And trust me, I don't like spending a nickel more than I have to. But it seems like the trade-off between, you know, the potential, if there is a school closure of 800 to a million dollars, and missing a budget cycle to have that robust discussion as a board versus, versus spending that money, it might be worthwhile.
The one other, the one other point that hasn't been brought up yet that related to the decision is, you know, I think we're all in agreement that we want to do this on a regular basis, whether it's every year or every few years, what have you. So, you know, part of this decision process also is, you know, it would be ideal if we could pick a long-term partner in this. You know, we, we got a, a near-term goal that we got to get to, but, you know, I think everybody, when they're deciding who to go with here, should keep in the back of the mind that, you know, what, I bring it up again, we, we got some major facility decisions to make, and understanding where the, the trends are and keeping on top of those trends in our school district, even down at, at the building level, are going to hopefully help in make better decisions around those buildings in terms of, you know, where we're spending the, the millions of dollars over the next five to 10 years. So we hadn't brought that point up. I just wanted to point that out as, as we're having the discussion.
Real quick, just to understand if it, this goes on for next month, or next week, and I don't know what this does to the RFP or the money, and maybe this is what you're suggesting. It would almost be helpful, but it might not be cost-effective because I think people were worried about what it would look like. And even when we discussed the logistics, we were worried what can, where everybody would go. If you include the redistricting, because like Scott said, he doesn't want people to think we've jumped to conclusions, but we want the whole picture of having a redistricting with four buildings and a redistricting with five, like you said. I'm sure that raises the cost, but that gives everybody the picture to make a well-educated, well-informed decision. And I would agree with you that even though it's not best-case scenario, nothing ever is, so if we just run it parallel so we can go forward.
There, there are, there are two assumptions that are being made, and, you know, I'd kind of like you to respond to, Dr. Zerby. One is if we, if we go with M&amp;M, you know, that's easier to understand the timeline and how everything flows out. If we go with Montgomery County, you know, there's some parallel work there, and the underlying assumption is that the timeline of where we get to a point where we understand how we're going to redistrict, whether that includes a school closing or keeps the existing, that timeline's not going to be significantly impacted. And the other aspect of that is since we're going to have a company, whoever that ends up being, reviewing our entire school district from a redistricting perspective, that whether we throw in another scenario that says either keep all the buildings or close one of the elementary schools is not going to significantly impact the cost there. Because if we, if we do that scenario, that implies that we went with Montgomery County, which is 20 or more thousand dollars cheaper than, than the, the M&amp;M, so that, you know, we, we're saving money there, but we aren't going to be significantly increasing money by asking for those two scenarios. So those are kind of the two assumptions that there are. The timeline's going to stay about the same, and our, our expense, overall expenses to do this evaluation aren't going to significantly go up.
Well, let me, as, I, I think it's only fair for me to, to suggest this. While, while I believe that, you know, we can put an RFP together and we can get a vendor to do the redistricting, I don't have that vendor right now. So, so, so the, the reality is, and only, only to be fair, because this timeline, the timeline is the most important thing, and before I go on that, I think it's important for the, the board to understand that, you know, I, I meet regularly in, in this, in the fall and the spring with, with the staff. And in this, in this most recent, what's called the superintendent roundtables, you know, the discussion really boiled down to, they, they just wish that, you know, this cloud of uncertainty with regards to this could, could be addressed. And so I, I just want the board to be aware of that and know that, you know, I, I'm here to help make the best decision. I just, I, I just want to be fair to say that while I'm making the recommendation to go with Montgomery County Planning Commission for the enrollment projections, I really don't have a, a vendor lined up to say, yeah, they're going to be able to meet this timeline. But conceivably, if I'm, if I'm able to do that this month and get something out, I would think that there is some reasonableness to suggest that, that can be done. But if it doesn't over the next, you know, two months or so, and it starts dragging on, and we have a, a similar discussion as we are now going over two months, how is it that we're going to actually land with this and be able to make a, a decision? So I want you to know that that's my concern, and the easiest way to kind of get away from those concerns, we would, we'd just go with the vendor that we know can do both of the jobs, while it's going to cost us a lot of money. Well, no, well, I'm talking about the whole thing. You, I just seem to lip the 20,000. You're actually, you're accurate with this, since that it's, it's 20,000 for the enrollment. But if we were doing the other portion, which I think the boards, into some level, I'm not saying everybody voted yes and there was no vote, but it seemed like the discussion was reasonable to say that, yeah, it would be, it would make sense for us to look at, you know, what some redistrict options would, would look like. So, you know, with that said, I, I'm, I'm looking for direction. I, I want to put the right item on the agenda. I want, I want this process to move forward, and I want it to move forward as, you know, as a board of ten so we can get this thing done, because there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot hanging on this, and, and we need to do what's right for our students, and we need to do what's right for this community. I need your help.
I just would like to see us have this so that we're not sitting in May next year trying to go through the budget and have to make a hurried decision. I mean, we start the budget process, you know, December, January, so it seems like the train, just like the, the Harvard study on teachers, that train's got to come in early enough so that we can make informed decisions about how it may or may not impact the budget. That's, you know, piece, they both can do the work. I'm just saying, it's the timeline that really drives the essence of this, you know, and then we need to put it away once and for all. And it'll all tie to master planning, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of connecting the dots. So I mean, I mean, you know, I, I'm, I just want to make sure that we are driving that train towards something that we can have information as a board and have an informed discussion as to how it impacts the children, the education, the community, the budget, which all tie together.
If I can just jump into the conversation here. First, I would like to say that I do support Dr. Zerby's initial recommendation of using Montgomery County Planning Commission. One of the only reservations I had was that it was a one-man show. Hiring of a second person kind of alleviates some of that. Anecdotally, I was at a PSBA event, a regional event with Montgomery County and Bucks County school directors, and there was a casual conversation of people who have used MCPC for their enrollment studies, and there was not a single negative word said about the work that they've done. They both said that they're familiarity with the, the region as well as the understandability of their report. I'm making up the word, understandability. But just, just to go on the record, that people in our area have used them and have been very happy with, with the end results. Secondly, I would say that I think it is very important to get the RFP written and ready to go for the redistricting. There had been mention in the last go-around of the company CityGate. They were actually one of the people who I was firmly behind for the redistricting, not the enrollment phase, because of their geo-coding aspects and their ease of, once they have all of our students loaded on the, the redistricting and they could teach us to use the tool. So I would hope that, you know, hopefully they do respond. If they don't, maybe we can reach out to them like we did with M&amp;M, if they didn't respond to our initial RFP as well. So I would say that I support your initial recommendation. I would like to see the RFP written for the redistricting, and if we could reach out to CityGate, it's one of those if they don't respond. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, for being down this road once before and from, understanding the situation from probably eight years ago, 10 years ago, Dave needs certainty. from probably eight years ago, 10 years ago, Dave needs certainty. I sat there when the board said, hey, we're, we're going to vote on this come June 26th, and all of a sudden, they pulled a chair out from under Dave. And this is, certainty is a very big part of this, whether it's staff, whether it's students, whether it's parents, and Dave needs that direction. So, if you're going down this road, don't delay it, make it happen, far as whatever RFPs have to be done, whatever, redistricting, people you got to have come and take a look at it. The reality is, the numbers have been done once, look at what our enrollment's doing. It's a trend, and it's been, that trend's been happening for a long time. And even if that trend gets to, our schools are minus 500 students, okay, and we'll say the models are wrong and we start having an increase, there's not going to be a 500-student increase the next year. It's still going to take a number of years to where you're going to have time to react to it, and so on. I mean, if that's a concern, that if the enrollment studies are completely wrong. Looking at the demographics of the district, I think they're, the previous studies were right on the money, and I think you'll find the same. What I do wonder is, if they come back and they say, you have enough enrollment drop that two schools should be considered, based on utilization study and enrollment. So, what, what is going to give Dave the certainty? That's, that's my message, and have a timeline that's precise, swift, and then that way this open sore goes, gets healed someday, sooner than later.
You know, I, last year, I looked at a lot of different studies when, when all the previous discussion was going on. You know, I thought I could add my professional expertise in, in public comment and things like that. So, I looked at a lot of different companies, I probably, I've probably reviewed five or 10 from M&M and probably over 20 from Montgomery County, along with a lot of other ones. And there is a big range of professionalism out there, and, you know, when, when I looked at them all, the, the ones that I landed on, for me personally, was, M&M was pretty good, and Montgomery County Planning Commission was pretty good in my opinion. The things that I liked about Montgomery County that I thought they were more thoughtful about is they, they really seemed to understand the region better. So, when I see articles that talk about, you know, Montgomery County's on the verge of having this explosion in terms of jobs and population and all that, you know, there's been recent articles published about that, you know, what does that mean for our school district and all that? And when I think about who's going to know that better and understand those type of dynamics better, you know, I don't want us to have some company that doesn't necessarily understand those dynamics on a localized level making those decisions for us, because if that population explosion doesn't hit our school district, then we're, we aren't going to see that growth. But if there's an infusion of that growth into our district, then we need to understand that and understand what that means for the long-term for our school district. So, from, from my personal and professional opinions, you know, I, I feel that Montgomery's the best choice. I understand that that creates another level of complexity in, in the process and the timeline, but I think, you know, we have, we have options on how we handle that. The other, the other point I want to make is, I think I speak for the whole board in that we want this decision made, right? And we want it made in the next school year, so we can take action on it for the following school year. We don't want this to drag on. I personally don't have any kids in elementary schools, and I worry about it, so I can't imagine how, you know, much concern it creates for those families that are in those schools wondering where, you know, where are my kids going to go next year, because they probably love the school they're in and, and don't want to, want to move, and, you know, that, that plays a big part into everything. So, I think, from my perspective, that's got to be at forefront on all our decisions around this. We got to hit that date. If, just like we have these hard-set budget dates that we got to deal with, we got, we got to stick to our guns around, around that dates and not let it slip. And at this point, I personally don't have any concern with the, the parallel process because there might be some additional cost to taking that route, but we also have some savings by using the vendor, we're going to be going along with that route. So, that's, that's my personal opinion, and while we, we haven't taken an official vote on it, we aren't going to vote on it, I think most of the people around felt that Montgomery was the, the most preferred one. So, the guidance I'm going to give you, Dave, is to go ahead with that, and we'll vote on it at the next meeting. Also, I think a lot of people shared that we got to get going on the understanding what it means from a redistricting partner perspective, so let's, let's get that going. You know, over the next month or so, we're going to be finishing up this budget where, you know, unlike our governments, we're by law have to have a balanced budget, we can't print our own money here. The next big item for us is to really start driving on this, okay?
So, so just for, just for the record, then, I will add Montgomery County Planning Commission in as the recommendation, and then I'll add a second recommendation under this to authorize the administration to issue an RFP for redistricting services. So, in the meantime, between now and then, I'll start gathering materials associated with the redistricting criteria that we would use, and I will share that out for feedback from the, from the board, and then hopefully, once the 24th comes, and if the agenda item is approved as presented, we can be in a much better position to get the RFP out as soon as possible. Does that make sense?
I would just like to add, I'd like to see a date in there that we'll have it done by. I want it officially in the minutes that this is the date. So, that we can have.
I would add to that, that if you could come back to us and say, this is a date we need to have it done by, so.
Tire vendors.
Yeah, if, and let's try to work everything to that. You know, we kind of need to know what the drop-dead date is, so that we don't rush on the other.
Let me update, the timeline was a sequential timeline, now you, now you need a parallel timeline, and I need to put that together for you, so I'd like to provide that, and maybe in the Friday memo, that'll give us some, some thought for the vote on Tuesday. Is that, is that fair?
The other point on that is, you know, when, when you're coming to a decision on that drop-dead date, I, you know, I hope you'd have some discussions with, with your team to put some realistic expectations around that. You know, does everybody feel that we can hit this? And it's, I don't want it to be everybody just saying yes to try to, to agree with you. I'd hope that there'd be some good dialogue with, with your team around, you know, what, what is that date, and can we really hit that? Because we're going to do something, right? We just don't know what it is yet, and we need to be thoughtful of the community and all the people at all, all the schools. So, you know, take some time to put some thought in, into that with your team, please.
Next on the agenda are dates for board members' calendars, old business and new business, board, board goals. Is that something that you plan to discuss this evening, or are you going to, is that for the 24th?
I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it tonight. I, I did get a little bit of feedback on the goals, not a lot. They, as I mentioned, there were intentionally too many on there, that was an excessive amount, but that was intentional. I did get some feedback, and so what I've done is I've narrowed down the goals. The only thing that I think's lacking, and when Scott gave me feedback, he wrote this word, I think, eight times on the paper, metrics.
Probably at least.
Yeah, at least, in red. So, the, the, I haven't included metrics on the goals yet, because I want to put some thought in that, and I think, Dr. Zerby, I want to get your input on that. So, in terms of the goals, from my perspective, they're finalized, and I have a hard copy, I'm going to share with you on the way out, intake those. If you have any major issues with the goal itself, please let me know. Otherwise, between now and, and the board meeting, I'm just going to be trying to put some metrics around those. I don't know if I'm going to be able to achieve that and put metrics around all of them, but I'm, I'm going to work on that, okay? So, that's it in terms of the board goals.
And then we have courtesy of the floor, which is an agenda item for this evening.
Just one other suggestion, where we show the upcoming meetings, it seems like it might be helpful, because we had some meetings shifting there at the very end, that we also post the time of the meeting. I just think that would be helpful for the public.
Thank you for the suggestion. Andrew Sander, Lower Providence. I just wanted to say, I think, Dr. Zerby, I think I heard you say that the committee, of which I'm one of the two truly involved members, agreed that Melona McBroom and Montgomery County Planning Commission can do an equivalent job. I think, the last time I spoke with you, I strongly feel that Melona McBroom would not do nearly as good a job as Montgomery County Planning, so I just want to make that clear. Some of the things that Chris had said, and also that Michael had said, and I hope that you do, as Michael followed up with some people, to see some people, you know, do some follow-up with Melona McBroom at least to bring to the next meeting, that says, hey, I've talked to three references, and this is what they've said. We've heard from Michael that a number of references, and we've seen a number of repeat customers to Montgomery County. But I just think that that's really important, to talk to people who've actually used them. So, that, that's just really important there, and, you know, just that the fact that he didn't hear one bad word is kind of what I've heard and what I've seen. Another thing is with, with that, is that we have to make sure that we do choose a long-term partner that understands our community. That's, that's probably the most important thing. And when we talk about the community, and I think Mr. Phillips said it as well, that we need to make sure that people really are believing the data, that the data is good data for our superintendent to make. And a lot of what Malone, what, what Montgomery County can bring to the table will satisfy a lot of what the questions were of the community, and that I know from being on the committee and seeing all the questions versus Melona McBroom. So, that's a really important consideration for you all to understand. To more exciting things, I have employed and been responsible for a lot of people, both as an employer and person. I've, I've done a lot to build positive economic engines in multiple communities. So, if we want to talk about that kind of thing, I'm always welcome to, to do that. I don't say that to put up my feathers, I've never said it before, and I don't do it to bully people, but I just want to make sure that that's known by the board. You know, one of the comments that was made to make, to have people donate their time as teachers, I would say that's about as ignorant as to say that if I were to find a home builder that sells homes for roughly a million dollars in our community, that we ask that person to take, donate the proceeds from the next sale of that house to the school system, just to feel good about themselves, and maybe get a tax deduction.
Actually, what they bring in in revenue on a million-dollar house, and how many kids they bring to the school, they do very well for the district. I don't know how much you pay a year in taxes, or how many kids you have, but if you roughly pay $4,000 a year in taxes, and your kids cost $20,000 per student, I mean, a lot of people are helping you out. The developer, when they put a million-dollar home in, that's between $18,000 and $25,000 a year with no children to the district. So, the developer's doing a very good job for the school.
Jim, this is really the courtesy of the floor. And I do see, I do see that, that interest of why you want to keep taxes low when you sell million-dollar homes. Great point, thank you. All right. It's just ridiculous and ignorant, and a lot of you guys talk about, you know, how, I like the fact that you're using your expensive iPhone while I'm talking. You know, you guys talk about the former board and what they did, and how they didn't do it, and, you know, that's all fine and dandy, I understand that, but we do have to move forward. And one of the things that I see here, though, is some political grandstanding, and that's inappropriate. That doesn't move people forward. We just have to say it is what it is, and we're going to go forward, because there were a lot of bad financial decisions made, nobody can argue that. But we have to move forward, and we can't do it under political grandstanding. And when we're sitting here politically grandstanding over a $47 per house per year increase, I think that's ridiculous, especially when you consider the effects of not doing that, and what that can do to our school system, making irrational knee-jerk reductions for $47. To the average homeowner, if you guys ruin this school district over the next 10 years for political gain, you could reduce the value of $180,000 home by $40,000 easily. So, I'm more than happy, and I think if you talk to more people in the community, to spend $47 to save $40,000. I think you guys really need to look at that, and I think you also need to listen to Andrea when she talks about, we talk about, oh, how it's, we'll just cut this, we'll cut that, but education is part of your jobs. You do have to look at what we're doing to the education, and that is what directly drives property value. So, it's not just people with children in school, it's not just the kiddos in the school, it's the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to preface my remarks by saying I'm speaking privately and not at any elected position, or opinion of elected position. A couple of brief things, and I really want to talk about the SRO if I may. But I, having been involved in previous discussions, many of them on the enrollment studies, while the debate continues, I think we need to be very mindful that there are specific students that are adversely affected by the lack of action. There are imbalanced classrooms, some students in these lower grades with 25 per class, others with 14, and that's not equal. I've been told, and don't know it, but anecdotally, I've been told that there are some students in Eagleville who are in the elementary lower grades who are being bused to Worcester with extended bus times, and that's not fair to them. So, while it may be important and critical, and I wouldn't disagree, that we should take appropriate time and get appropriate data before we make long-term decisions, I would hope you might consider what some of these children are going through while this goes on, and take some perhaps triage action to try to minimize that. I don't, having experienced that personally with one of our children, the people that are affected most are the ones that move into town, because they're the last ones to register, so if the room is full, they're moved out. So, as we experienced, a child who wants to get to know all of his friends and neighbors gets bussed out of his home district to another district. And that, I mean, that's a personal reflection, but I just think it would be helpful if we could at least address some of those and try to accommodate those in some other way, exceptions to let it go to 26 if it's one child, or some other way. But I wish you'd keep that in mind during this long process of making long-term decisions. And just a brief thing on the excess funds and the fund balance, while it is perhaps necessary to a level to have sufficient fund balances and prudent to do so, I think it's also important not to be overly conservative in that regard. If you are going to tax citizens, as I believe has been done in prior years, in excess of what is necessary, what you're doing basically is taking money out of the taxpayers' bank accounts and putting it into the school district's bank accounts, and it's not doing anything. If that is the case, that's improper. I'm not saying that that's true, I'm just pointing out that as you consider the adjustments that are necessary, I think it's very important to also consider that while prudence might be necessary, ultra-conservatism can have significant impact on other can have significant impact on others. It also, by the way, I think, can affect house pricing and competitive house pricing, which can then cause a problem that is counterproductive to the enrollment problem, meaning lower house sales, less children. So, all of those things are interwoven. I'm not suggesting that there is a burning platform here at this point, but as I hear these comments, I would caution that we would be prudent not to take money and just put it into savings account because of what might come later. I mean, the taxpayers, if it comes later, are going to have to pay anyway. So, don't take it from too early if it isn't necessary. Now, if I may, just for a moment, the SRO program is, I think, an important one, and I heard the discussion in the last meeting, and I felt that, you know, perhaps, at least from my own perspective, the SRO program wasn't discussed at the level that I would prefer to describe it. So, very, very briefly, as I think you all know, but the program was established in 2006, 10 years ago, covering Arcola and the four elementary schools in Lower Providence. Initially, it was partially funded through a state grant during the first three years. Since then, new agreements have been made between the school district and Lower Providence Police Department. In February of '11, five years ago, the school district in Lower Providence agreed to expand the program to the high school and to Worcester Elementary. The most recent agreement was renewed in January of '14 for an additional three years, expiring, as you know, in January of '17. Functionally, this program is an effective program on a continuous and daily basis. It is not a tragedy-deferral program. It has impact on students and teachers and faculty and administration every day. Now-retired Chief Carroll was invited here about a year ago, a year and a half ago, to provide some data, and from that public speech that he made, I can tell you that during the three months he spoke of, which were the last quarter of 2014, the SROs in Arcola had 14 meetings with faculty, 16 meetings with students, and 21 meetings with administration. Under the law enforcement area, they had 15 incident reports, 10 referrals to the youth, I'm not, it's YAP, the youth something program. Sorry, I've forgotten what that is. In addition, the same SRO participated in Arcola in programs on bullying prevention, programs on character and self-respect, assemblies in narcotics overdose prevention and education, and in addition, took part in a program called Blue Buddies, where they were paired up with troubled youth in the elementary schools. This has been an ongoing part of that program in Arcola. At the high school, prevention and education in a 90-day period, the same 90 days back in the end of 2014, 111 meetings during that 90 days with faculty, 139 meetings with students, 88 meetings with administrators. In addition, that high school SRO participated in programs--
Peter, can you, can you wrap up, please?
I will.
Thank you.
On DUI, on Fourth Amendment rights, public police incidents, et cetera. So, they were very involved with the ongoing school. So, very briefly, the costs, it was mentioned that it would be nice if the township chipped in. The township pays out of its own pocket over $50,000 annually as part of this program already, has been, and still will during the course of this contract. When we talk about chipping in, we're talking about people who pay the school taxes chipping in from another bucket. If the townships were to try to come to some agreement to chip in for this program, the same tax dollars that would be used by the school district to pay for it would go through those townships back into this program. So, it isn't any different money, and it isn't, right now, Lower Providence is chipping in, I think, on an equitable basis of about 2/3 based on the students, and Worcester's chipping in based on the taxation, about 1/3, which is about right. To do it any other way would be very difficult and probably not equitable. I think it's a very important program, and I urge you to reconsider making this change. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's getting late. I'll try to be short. Preston Lutwiler, Audubon. I've got three, now four, things to talk about. First of all, redistricting. Peter's comments were great segue to the question about redistricting and the redistricting study. I think you're doing the right thing to try to do this parallel. I think you're going to have more vendors than H&amp;M be able to do the redistricting study. Mike mentioned one of them, CityGate. And I'd suggest that by the next meeting, before the next meeting, Dr. Zerbi, you call CityGate and ask them about feasibility, general price, timeline, and the cost of multiple options versus the cost of just one option. Once this stuff is geocoded, the information is in there, I don't think it's a big deal to run multiple scenarios. So, if you have that information, it'll make it easier for the board to make the decision next week. On the budget, I want to reiterate the comment about Gary's comment about arguing about $47 per household, and maybe in some cases, it's a little more than that. But what you're arguing about tonight is less than what I voluntarily paid to help the methactin history club, which won a national recognition, to go and compete nationally. And frankly, I'd like to see more of that from methactin, and I'd like to, and I gladly will contribute my tax dollars and contributions for those kind of things in this community. I liked Mike's analysis of the tax increase. If I had paid 1.2% or 1.3% increase last year, I'd be paying 2% this year. No big deal. And Brenda, I understand what you're saying. It was found money from selling the buses and low cost of fuel and some other things. To take that money out of the reserves, to have a zero-tax increase, to set a low starting point for this year, to put yourselves in this position, was not the right thing to do. And I think the right thing to do would have been to look at leveling the increases. I don't think anybody is taxing the people to put money in the bank. Peter mentioned about it's irresponsible to tax taxpayers and put the money in the bank. Then he came and said, hey, you should be paying for the SRO program. You can't have it both ways. The SRO program is a great program. If you've got extra money, put it in that and keep that program going. Arguing about, you know, a fraction of a percent tax increase is not going to help this community. Discussions for the budget talked about the consortium. And I've learned a lot in the last couple of months about the consortium, how it came about, what it does. And I think it's very interesting to hear people here sort of taking credit and praising and talking about how the consortium has cut and controlled costs. It is a cooperative, it's modeled after one that was done in Western Pennsylvania. The one in this area is the second one in the state. It's a great program, and what makes it great is that it is a cooperative program between management and the teachers or labor, and it works well. And I think things like this should be a model going forward. And I'll end with just one comment, and that is, the suggestion that people voluntarily give back four days of their work to try to close a budget gap is not going to encourage voluntary cooperation between labor and management. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I'll try to keep to the three minutes, but I have two subjects, one of them being the budget, another one being the enrollment projections. With regard to the enrollment projections, Dr. Zerbi said timing is of the essence, and I guess time is of the essence right now, but he's thirsty. And he also said that in his opinion, M&amp;M and the planning commission could do comparable work, and I support that. And then we have several other people with their opinions. And so, you know, you on the board need to consider all of these things, and the M&amp;M people, I think, a few weeks ago, they stated that they could start in this month, May, presuming they had a contract. But, you know, assuming they have a contract on June 1, I think they would still work June, July, August, and September. And spending $18,000 extra on the chance that we could save a million dollars in next year's budget, that supports timing is of the essence, and it's a no-brainer that it's, that's a pretty good return on the money, a million dollars versus $18,000. And I think that Connecticut is not that far away, that in the long run, any outfit located in Connecticut could support us on a continuing basis. And I think, I think there's some value in having the same firm do both enrollment projections But, you know, you decide on your own. I think it was in the spring of 2013 that we first entertained having Dr. Zerbi go out for a projection, and, you know, my recollection is that the first party that he contracted with couldn't fulfill the job because he died, and then Dr. Zerbi went with the Pennsylvania Economy League. And I think you know the scheduling from then until, here we are in May of 2016. With regard to the budget, some years ago, Dr. Quinn put out the first data portfolio in December, and he followed that with, I think, two others that came out not in December, in January of the year. And here we are halfway through the month of May, and Angela Lynch, today, when I queried her, said that we've just started working on the data portfolio for this year, and maybe it'll be out in two or three weeks. But I think the data portfolio is an input to the budget, and I think it's unfortunate that there's data in a data portfolio that is unavailable, at least to the public.
Can you finish up, please?
Yeah. The other thing relative to the health care consortium is that, on principle, where on various enrollment, employment contracts, the employees put in a percentage of the health care premiums, that in some way, the employees are entitled to get money back if the premiums, for whatever reason, were too high, or the employees restrained themselves in their health care charges. So, I think that where money comes back from that reserve balance, if the employees put in 10%, I think in some way, the employees should get 10% of what we bring back out of fairness. And as someone said just a few minutes ago, it's a cooperative thing. So, you know, if we, you know, if in fact it's 10%, and we bring back a million, we could use 100,000 of that for reducing future employee premiums.
Ms. Andrews, I need you to finish up, please.
Yeah. The, and the, the other thing is that at the finance committee meeting last week, there was a proposal to use, to get money from the letter of credit with Worcester to help in this year's budget. And I don't think Worcester is about to do that when the part of the project, the Fields Project, that that letter of credit supports is incomplete. It's not like the project is all done. One last item here, the, I think that where the students in the high school and in Arcola that are, will be freshmen in the fall, where they give their inputs in February as to scheduling, that the master schedule should be available by the middle of May. And I think there ought to be, you know, some directors that take a look at that master schedule before this budget is settled. I just, I just can't see us saying we need just as many teachers as we had not too many years ago when we had--
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
--10% more students. So, you know, maybe it's be worthwhile if the administration were to put forward an actual proposal that if the board wanted to cut five high school teachers, where would that be? Would it be in the music program, or scattered across English, or whatever? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Bickle, excuse me, Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I just want to reiterate the fact about the million dollars that's coming back from the consortium. It's 12%. I believe my wife had to pay in the 13, 14 school year. So, if you take that million dollars, 12% is $120,000, I think, of that million should go back to the employees. If there's 550 employees, I think they each should get a check for $218, plus or minus if they have family coverage or single coverage. I think it should be a calculation that's done every year. I mean, if you get a surplus, you need to spread that out about what's due to each employee because they were paying too much. I just think that some of that money should go back, and even my wife, who's not an employee of the district anymore, is probably do some money back because of premiums that she paid in excess of claims, you know, across the whole consortium. The other thing, this finance committee handout, it gives an estimate for June 30 expenditures and revenues, but at the bottom, you have all these things being backed out or added in, like severance pay. It says paid in '14, '15, not '15, '16. Hopefully, the accruals, those who understand accounting or whatever, the accruals and, you know, the payables and receivables, hopefully, they're backed out on an ongoing basis so that the board is looking at good expenditure reports and revenue reports as they go through the year. I hope that that happens, because it doesn't seem to be, because you have this, these lump-sum numbers here, and you don't even know where they're spread amongst the function areas of the budget. So, it's hard to really make a comparison, you know, just as it came up with the 2300 series earlier. The other item I heard, I heard there wasn't a freshman football team. Is that correct, from last fall?
We had freshman, but not JV.
You had a freshman football team?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay. I heard that there wasn't. And then I was wondering why it's taken so long to find a business manager. We had noticed that Mr. White Leather was leaving in April, and to not find one in two and a half months, it just seems like it's, that's a pretty long time to fill the position, you know, to get the word out and get applications in and to get the interview process going and to get somebody in, and even try to get him in before Mr. White Leather leaves, on or before June 30. I think, I think that's a long time to take. And it was really good to hear that there's going to be different reports. I think the board is owed different reports and disclosures, and there should be a construction fund report, there should be a capital reserve fund report. I think you need to have a handle on where this money is, and I think it should be noted that, you know, like that consortium money, that that should be part of the financial statements as a note, okay? I just think there's a need for better reports on a monthly basis, in the agenda, as attachments, so that the public knows where the money is, where all the money is, in a simple form. so that the public knows where the money is, where all the money is, in a simple format. Thank you.
Thank you.
First regarding the budget, thanks for all the discussion. Heard some really good ideas and some not-so-good ideas. But anyway, I think it's important to keep in mind that you've got six more weeks before you have to approve a final budget. So I think a lot of these ideas that were brought up tonight should be considered. And even after you approve the proposed final budget next week, there can be more changes made. Is that right? Okay. So you have another four weeks after that to be considering making changes. And it shouldn't be just the bigger items. The little items should be considered. I mean, there was discussion at the Finance Committee of an error in the FICA tax calculation of 11,000. A budget error should be corrected. You can reduce the tax increase for that 11,000. I don't understand increasing taxes when you're putting reserves in the budget. That's what your fund balance is for. So I think that 200,000 operating expense reserve should come out. That should be a no-brainer. Not so sure about the capital reserve, but another consideration is that there is 760,000 sitting in the capital campaign fund account. It's outside the capital reserve, it's outside the general fund. Are those monies going to go back to the general fund? Because I'm pretty sure that expenditures relating to the field project came out of the general fund as well as the capital reserve fund. So the question you have to answer is, what's going to happen with that money? Things that are known, like the Shenondale revenue that Mr. Dorr mentioned, if you have a building coming online, I mean, the builder's not going to let it vacant. I mean, they're going to want it occupied as soon as possible. If there's a potential 300,000 revenue, put 150 in the budget. I mean, that's a pretty conservative estimate, I would think. I think the budget should not be a slam dunk for the administration. I think you've got to build in some budgetary risk, but it's got to be a manageable risk. And right now, there are some things in here that are pretty simple, I think, are risks that you could take on in the budget to get closer to that Act I or even below, possibly. But the key point, I think, is that you've got six more weeks to work on this. And I think at a minimum, the board should direct the administration to go back and keep working. We just found out last week of a $2.3 million reserve that was discussed tonight. I understand taking 1 million, but Ms. Hacken made a great point. At a $50,000 stop loss, that'll fund 26 claims. That's a lot of claims for 400, 500 employees to get above that 50,000. And I guess the other question on that is, why is that reserve held at the consortium versus within Methacton's books and records? I mean, the question, why don't you take back all 2.3 million dollars, establish your reserve for medical claims, and just keep that on your balance sheet? Keep the cash, earn interest on it, and possibly do other things with it?
It's the way the consortium works, that the premium paid in versus the claims paid out, whatever surplus or deficit is remaining is contained within the consortium. That's the way the consortium functions.
At my company, we self-insure as well. And the way our plan works is that we fund the actual claims as they're submitted. We don't put in a flat amount. You know, is the consortium require you to put in for them to hold a reserve?
No. The, you're, the way you're referencing what is paid in is based upon our plan actuary, Aon Hewitt, determining what the rate structure should be to cover the claims with their feeder of whatever the increase would be relative to what we anticipate looking forward. So what we pay in is a mechanism of them determining actuarially what the value is of that. And then the goal is to balance out, or as close to balance out as possible, with the known that you could be in a good cycle or a negative cycle. As I illustrated earlier this evening, some districts perform well and have surplus, as in our case, other districts have not and have resulted in them contributing.
No, I fully understand that. My question is, are they required to hold the full 2.3 million dollars? Or could the end of a period or end of a six-month period, you could ask for any excess to be refunded, and then we, as a district, maintain that reserve on our balance sheet based on that actuary and what we think the excess claims are going to be?
That is not a function of the consortium as it currently stands. Any request to handle that differently would have to be a change in the way that the consortium currently operates. You, at this point, cannot request fund returned back to you. Any funding that you have in surplus can be used as an offset to pay a month's premium as in our situation, but in terms of dollars actually going back to you, that is not the way the consortium currently functions. That would require a change.
But you could withhold two months of premiums and set up a million-dollar reserve on our own balance sheet.
You could do a million different options.
Right. So it is possible to keep that reserve on the Methacton balance sheet.
As your example, I could give 50 other examples of scenarios that we could use.
You're missing the point.
I understand. I, no, I understand what your point you're illustrating, and yes, if we would choose to take that count down to zero and use our entire surplus that we currently have, we could do that.
I'm not suggesting using it. I'm saying, keep the reserve on our balance sheet for what we think the reserve requirements are to fund those claims. So you could do that. I mean, that's the point, is that this will get that, this suggestion gets it back on our balance, the Methacton balance sheet, and it gives you better visibility into it. Something to consider. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. I brought up last month that there was a payment to a law firm for a lawsuit settlement for $44,000. My question is, when did the board stop voting to approve the settlement of these lawsuits? That should not have been in list of bills. That should have been an agenda item. The board should have voted to settle that. 44, that's a lot of money. The taxpayers have every right to know when lawsuits are settled. The last lawsuit I remember being voted on in this room was the Dr. Jamalik lawsuit. And it couldn't be settled until the board approved it. I've sat in this room for 10 years and watched every agenda every month and seen special education lawsuits that had to be voted on by the board. I don't know who or when it was decided that this was no longer an agenda item. This is taxpayer money you're giving to people to settle lawsuits. We should be very well aware of what you're spending. As they say, it's our money. I also asked last month what was the percentage of students that bought their lunch in the school districts. I was a little surprised when I got the response. This is something that needs to be in the budget. Dr. Zerby was the nicest enough to send me an email. 28% of the students buy lunch in the school district. This is a problem. We outsourced the lunches because we weren't in the lunch business to save money. How are we saving money? We outsourced the bus drivers to save money. How are we saving money? Who are we going to outsource next? You have the janitors and the maintenance people left. I mean, you're looking at a budget, you're sitting here saying you're blaming on the last school board that was here because we had a 0% tax increase, which I stood there last year and said, is this going to come back to bite us? And yes, it is. 3.35% is not realistic. People in this school district cannot afford this, regardless of what anybody thinks. I received two phone calls today from parents who have children in the school district. They saw the increase in their taxes. They're looking at to put their houses up for sale. Because one parent is losing his job in two weeks. He works for a firm who is leaving Pennsylvania because it's too expensive, moving to Florida and not taking his employees with him. He's going to hire new employees in Florida. They have children in this district. They're not going to be able to afford to stay here. They've been here a very long time. I've been in this district a very long time. I can't afford you people anymore. And I know it's about education, but I have yet to see your budget go towards education. Your children are being short shifted in this school district. And you want to know one example? Sitting right behind the school. You could complain about the turf field all you want. No one was in this room speaking against it. No one was looking at the price of this. Just like no one spoke against Skyview, and everybody complains now. This is the debt you're saddling the taxpayers with. I'm speaking for myself personally. I couldn't care less about anybody else because I haven't seen other people show up here to stand up to the school board. For many years, it was two people sitting in this room in budget time. But you have to look at the whole community. Over 70% of us no longer have children in the school district. I paid for my kids to come here, and I don't want someone else to tell me they've paid for my children when they didn't. I've been here for over 30 years, and you're talking about redistricting. In 30 years, I've seen this subject brought up twice in this school district. It was ugly. You have no idea what you're headed for because you're concerned about one school, you have to be concerned about the other parents who are going to be affected by this. Now, I sat in the hearings last year and Pell, for whatever reason, when gave their seven options to the board, one of those was mine, that I stood here and gave an option to the board. No one on this board has asked me about that option. And I've sat down and gone over it, and gone over it, and looked at both sides. And I think that would be, I'm sure you could look up Pell's report, it would be the perfect solution for this school district. I know I'm not sitting there and I don't work for any firms, but you don't have to redistrict. You will utilize a brand-new school, you might have to close two schools. But if you raise taxes 3.35%, you won't have to do an enrollment study because people will be leaving the school district, and enrollment is still going down. So our enrollment is going down, our taxes are going up. And the main reason is, you're taking money off the top for Peasars. That's what's driving this budget. And next year, it's going to be worse. We're going to have more Peasars to pay and a teacher's contract. And you're going to still lose more people. You want to bring people in. That's the object to bring people in. I see people leaving. You compare us to other school districts. What do Springfield, Upper Marion, Phoenixville, North Penn, and Wisconsin have in common? And Colonial? What do they have in common? They have a thriving business district that helps their residents on taxes. Methacton doesn't have that because Lower Providence and Worcester are not business-friendly. If we brought in more businesses, it would help us taxpayers. And that's what you need. So don't compare us to other school districts because people are leaving us to go to these other school districts. So you need to really, you have until, I'm surprised, June 28 this year. But you really need to look at bringing it down if you want to keep families here. You need to keep the families in this school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, all those in favor? Thank you, everybody.